All right, it is just minute or two after three o'clock. And we will get started with our study session today on workforce development. I'll ask the city manager to introduce our speakers.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may know, when we kind of reconfigured economic development and formed the EDO, we divided up tasks with the EDO taking on economic development, the city taking on quality of life, and the chamber taking on workforce development. So nearing year end, and this is an opportunity for representatives of the chamber, Eric Brown, short-term executive director. He's announced his resignation and he's moving on at the first of the year, shortly after the first of the year. And then Renee Duxler, who is serving, will be serving as the interim and is also currently workforce development director. So not sure who drew the short straw to kick the presentation off, but we have both of them from the chamber.
I am the president and CEO of the Salina Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for allowing us to give you an update on workforce development. Obviously, as Mike has mentioned, the economic development portion, workforce development portion of the chamber's duty is it talks about this holistic picture of all the economic development partners working in tandem to help support not only the businesses here, but also attract businesses. And so that's part of what we've got to do a lot of, obviously. And that's what we hope to have Renee go through this PowerPoint with you. But really, I just also want to say thank you. Thank you for your support through a lot of different timeframes over the last several years. There's a lot that the business community has to do, obviously, working with the governmental agencies. And you guys have been great to work with over the last few years, so I really appreciate that. Workforce development, the long and short of it is quantity and quality of labor issues in Saline County. And so that gets brought to you all quite often in the form of, you know, when you look at your pay plan, in the form of working with employers, in the form of incentives, job numbers, all of those types of things. So what the chamber has been tasked to do, when that happened, when we went down the road of doing workforce development. And so this was, I mean, we've done workforce development in some form or fashion for 30-plus years now. In 2018, we commissioned a study and we raised about one point, a little under $1.6 million on a five-year capital campaign called Imagine Salina. Imagine Salina was a multi-pronged approach that really focused in on this career and talent pipeline. And so when you look at a healthy talent pipeline, you're really talking about cradle to career. So how are those kids that are under five getting prepared for school? A lot of that brain activity happens under five in order for them to be set up for success long-term. And so when we have conversations around childcare, that's part of the reason we're in those conversations is those folks will end up being employers, business owners, members of this community long-term. So it's really about all of those pieces, that holistic picture. Some of the pieces that I'll point out anyways, when we talked about workforce development, specifically as career and technical education pathways from our secondary schools, either into post-secondary schools or into our employers locally. A lot of that work was done around 2013, 2014 with the school district. Did a great job with that. We also consistently look at truck drivers. We try to find what is the solution there. And that's also CDL licensed holders that may work for your organization, may work for the county, may work over the road. The transportation industry is in dire need and has, have been for several years. So part of that is working with Salina Tech when we did that. That would have been in 2014, 2015. I know I'm going pretty far back, but in order to get the whole picture workforce development, that's the old, the old adage, the old saying, the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago or today. So workforce development is always human capital. And how are we making sure that we're staying on the path and giving opportunities for our residents and our students to have those experiences? And so you're really talking about the talent pipeline, and it's also recruiting. How are we recruiting in people to fill the 2,400 open jobs we have right now, to fill the 1,500 to 2,000 jobs that are coming because of the expansion and retention efforts of the community as well? So those are all really kind of that high-level overview. What Renee is going to provide for you today are actual numbers around the Imagine Salina, the pieces that we look at, the key performance indicators, also just workforce numbers, period. What does our labor shed looks like? What do we, any given month, what does our actual employment numbers look like? And so over three years, we did have the spike, obviously, with the pandemic of those unemployment numbers going up. But we've been in either sub-three or sub-four for three to five years now. And so it's definitely, when those types of things happen, the production level of companies seems to slow a little bit. They've really worked hard to pick that up. But those are the types of things we want to keep our thumb on and really work towards. So with that, I am going to have, bring up Renee Duxler. She is Economic and Workforce Development Director for the next three weeks. January 9th, she's going to be interim chamber president and CEO. So Renee, come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you for having us this afternoon. If you have heard me present before, you know that I do a lot of data. I'm kind of a data nerd, so I'm throwing a lot of numbers, a lot of things at you. Definitely want this to be sort of informal, that if you have questions, please bring them up as they arise, or you can ask at the end. But we'll go ahead and get started if we could go to the next slide, please. So this is not something that I don't think most of you are unaware of. We've had a lot of public and private investment here in the community over the last five years totaling up to over $1 billion since 2018. And we're seeing another $300 million in the pipeline with some upcoming expansions. And of course, Nayar Works, the National Institute of Aviation Research, and everything that's going on over at Case U.S. Lina as well. So just a lot of investment going on in the community, a lot of growth. When I first started, two, over two years ago, we were projecting about 800 new jobs. Very swiftly in that, Schwann's and Kubota Great Plains announced their expansions. And so we moved that up to 1,200. Now we're looking closer to about 2,000 over the next five years. When we're talking to organizations and companies, not only do we have these expansions happening, but we also have this need to meet demand right now. Most of our companies are growing in Salina, and they need not only the current workers that they're trying to get on board, but are wanting to add to continue to grow. We're also seeing continued wage growth. Again, when I started, I think we were around 17 something an hour. We moved up to 18.27, and now we're sitting at $20.66 an hour. This is the average median wage, so this is across all industries, including, you know, a minimum wage workers all the way up to our most highest paid. The last time I gave a presentation, Mayor Davis was present and asked about the living wage. And so I kind of wanted to just throw that out as well. Living wage for Salina for just one adult, zero children, is $15.78. So we're clearly meeting that. When you get to two working adults and two children, that's $22.57. And then when you get to one adult with two children, it jumps up to $39.26. Next slide, please. So moving into what our current labor market, labor market looks like. October workforce participation was at 30,366. That's actually a little bit higher than we've seen over the last year. We've been kind of standing between 28.5 and the high end of 29,000. Unemployment rate has stayed below 3% since August of 2021, when it was at 3.3%. And workforce participation has kind of plateaued as well. Like I said, we've been kind of hovering between 28 and 29,000. Monthly job listings continue to hover around 2,500 per month. So when you look at our workforce participation and our unemployment rate, that's less than 1,000 people that are unemployed in the county. So with 2,500, we don't have the people here currently to fill those jobs, even if they were skills matched up. Highest need is in warehouse distribution, retail and restaurant, hospitality and healthcare. Most of you probably experience this when you're out in the community. Our restaurants are having to change their hours, close dates, those sorts of things. Next slide, please. This is difficult to see, but this is basically a real-time thing I'm able to pull from a database we have access to that looks at job listings. And I pulled for the last 30 days. You can see there in the top corner, it's 2,415. Highest need is those heavy tractor-trailer truck drivers, as Eric mentioned. Then right below that is registered nurses. And then you kind of move between that, like I said, retail, hospitality, healthcare are all intermingled in there as far as highest need for workers. Next slide, please. I do want to mention commuter data. Saline County is a regional hub in a lot of different ways, and we certainly have a fair amount of people who commute into our community. 91.5% of our workforce both live and work in Saline County. And those are the numbers you see with workforce participation. But we do have another 2,243 that live here and work outside of Saline County. So those numbers are also included in our workforce participation. It's the 6,307 workers who commute in throughout the region that are not included in our Saline County workforce participation. They're included in where they reside. So that's a net of about 4,000 workers that we bring in from our labor basin. Next slide, please. And again, this is a lot of information to put in front of you, but it's kind of interesting to look at. This is commuter data. What we don't know from this data is if these people are actually driving or if they're working remotely. But you can see here on the left-hand side of the screen, this is residents of Saline County and where they work. So you've got 24,944 that live and work in Saline County. You've got residents that are going to Sedgwick, McPherson, Dickinson, and so forth. On the right-hand side of the screen, it is where they live versus working. Same for Saline County, 24,944. We have 843 that come in from Ottawa, 841 from Dickinson, and so on. So you can kind of see where those numbers and where the counties we pull in the most from. Obviously, Ottawa, Dickinson, Riley, and McPherson are top there, although a fair amount from Sedgwick County. Next slide, please. So the question I get asked all the time, and you can click it again, is where are the people? Where are our people at? Where are our workers? And I think I'm going to talk a lot about national trends, what we're seeing nationally, that we're also seeing in Salina and Saline County, and it's also affecting us. So I'll be sharing a lot of national numbers and then trying to share Saline County numbers as I have them. Sometimes that's data we don't always have access to or doesn't get pulled. But just kind of talking about those trends. This is overlaying kind of what Eric already alluded to, that workforce development has been an issue for a long time in Saline County. We've had a lack of population growth. We talk about all the time, the brain drain from this community. That's been an issue for a long time. I think for my entire life, I've heard the phrase, "Our highest export or our largest export is our young people." So this is something that we're kind of framing with this already sort of challenge that we have. COVID has hit, a number of different things have been kind of slowly working toward this, this almost perfect storm of really, really tight labor market and workforce shortage. And how do we address it? Next slide, please. So misalignment is something that we've realized. You know, back when I was in high school and graduating from high school, everybody was really pushing college. And we're really starting to see the effects of that. And unfortunate danger of that, I guess, today. So roughly 60% of open jobs in America need to be filled by people without a college degree. And roughly 55% of those unemployed have a college degree. So we have this mismatch of skills, people who are, for lack of a better word, overeducated for the jobs that are available to them. In Saline County, job listings over the last six months, jobs needing high school diploma or less made up 68% of our listings. Our Saline County population ages 25 to 64 with an associate's degree or higher is 38%. So not quite up there of that 55%, we're a little bit more matched. But it's certainly still an issue. And then our 16- and 19-year-old population has actually grown, but that labor force has plunged significantly for decades. We just don't have that age group that used to kind of be in high school and have a job and get their first job when they're in high school. They're not working at that age anymore. Next slide, please. And you kind of see this here, so the boomer children helped explode this age group of 16- and 19-year-olds. And that's the top graph as it moves up from 1995 and forward. But that age group steadily has not joined the labor force at that time and continues to plateau over the last decade. Next slide, please. Low immigration, and this is legal immigration that we're talking about. We've just seen, unfortunately, a heavy plunge, especially since the pandemic of immigration into the country. And this hurts us because we are missing 2 million immigrants that we typically would have to do jobs. And this is anything from hospitality and restaurant and those jobs to healthcare, manufacturing, blue-collar jobs, all the way up to our engineers and our scientists and our doctors. So really talking about immigration, just understanding that we do need immigration reform in this policy, in this country. We do need to be able to start allowing workers back in to fill these jobs because they're not going to get filled by the current population that we have. One out of four construction or farming workers is foreign-born, and one out of every five manufacturing workers is foreign-born. Next slide, please. So we saw a heavy injection of federal funding after COVID hit. The CARES Act itself added up to $4 trillion to U.S. economy. That included relief checks, tax deferrals, loan forgiveness, and payroll protection act. Good, bad, or indifferent, this caused household incomes to soar across all demographics. So at every income level, at every race and ethnicity level, at every education level, and every age level, you see those incomes go up. And that has just caused people to not have to work as much as they would have had before. They've been able to sock that money away. They've been able to rely on savings. They've been living on credit cards. It's just one of those things that, again, good, bad, or indifferent, it has created a situation where workers kind of have the, have the, I guess, luxury of choosing when and how and why they want to work. Next slide, please. Mass of retirements. We've seen this coming for a long time, but we continue to see retirements tick away. I think it says there, there's still about $10,000, 10,000 retirements a day currently. And this is just the tail end of that baby boomer peak. So back in 2002, I believe, is when it really started ramping up. And we continue to see retirements affect us. That boomer generation, they were college-educated, they were hard-working, money-focused, and upskill-driven, and really drove the workforce for a long time. You saw women enter the workforce in droves. You saw children begin to enter the workforce between 1970 and 1990. And so you have this doubling of workforce that happened with the boomer generation. And now that's all kind of getting pulled back out from under us as we continue to have job growth. And 2016 is when millennials became the largest generation in the workforce, and they continue to be the largest generation in the workforce. Next slide, please. Our friends over at the county are no strangers to this issue, but I think it definitely has to be talked about and pointed out as we're talking about workforce. We have steadily seen, and my background in education is in social work. That's what I did for a number of years out kind of in the community, and have watched sort of this prime working age of men continue to not participate in the workforce at all. And that gap continues to grow, and we'll see that on the next slide. But as we're talking about opioids and overdoses, certainly, both men and women affected. But that prime-age men group are out of the labor force due to opioids. And that continues to grow steadily, either because they're dealing with addiction or unfortunately because they've died from addiction. They are dying at an astronomical rate. And that's something that we have to, you know, consider when we're talking about workforce development issues, is how we tackle opioids and overdoses. Next slide, please. And I do just want to point this out. So on the left-hand side there is primary male labor force participation from 1990 to 2020. And the right-hand side is women. And you see men, you know, making up about 95%, almost 95% of the workforce in 1990. And that has significantly dropped to 2020. Same, you know, for women, we kind of actually ticked up a little bit there and now are dropping again. Next slide, please. And then we've just seen an increase in self-employment, certainly since the pandemic. New business applications from firms likely to hire employees surged as well from 987,500 to over 1.4 million in 2021. Shortages have created a demand for the ability to work for yourself. And again, this sort of labor market that is kind of being run by the employee versus the employer. They can be contract workers, they can work remotely, they can do more of that than actually becoming a full-time employee. Self-employment is more desirable to younger generations. We know this from millennial and beyond. They like to be able to work for themselves. Their values as far as work ethics and how they work and why they want to work aren't of less value than older generations, but they're different. They're very different than, again, the boomer generation and even my generation. Next slide, please. So as we kind of think about all of that and going into, okay, how are we going to tackle workforce development, recruitment, retention, all of those issues here in Saline County? As Eric mentioned, we do have the Imagine Salina campaign. That was 1.6 million that began in 2019. That was initiated by local business owners in the Chamber of Commerce to really target and focus not only on workforce development, but also business retention and expansion. These objectives are recruitment and retention, as well as strengthening the educational pipelines, so really working with our area secondary and post-secondary schools. It includes a robust digital marketing component, which I'll talk about a little bit, to advertise the premium-paying jobs and high-quality of life that Salina has to offer. How do we let people know what a gem we have here in Salina? We know it. We understand it. How do we get this out to the rest of the world, basically? And then it also includes a website and other marketing collateral for employers to utilize in their recruitment efforts. Next slide, please. So when we look at web traffic, essentially how the digital marketing campaign works is we put ads out all over the internet. We utilize a number of different tactics. Some of them are geographical, along the I-70 and I-135 corridors, both within Kansas and sweeping clear down to Texas and over to Missouri, up through Nebraska. So that targeting, we also do a targeting of what would be high unemployment rate, but low-wage areas. So areas that are kind of, especially in southeast Kansas, there's some areas in Arkansas, Texas, Oklahoma that we've targeted where they're paying low wages, they have a high unemployment rate. How can we talk to these people and say, just, you know, a little bit north here, we've got jobs in Salina? So we're targeting those areas specifically. If you look at our website, users that has continually ramped up throughout the years, we do foresee, this is just through the beginning of December of 2022. So we've seen that tick up. We now have over 100,000 unique individual users over the last three years. So these are not people that keep coming back and clicking. This is each time a new user clicks. We also ask people if they want to submit their resumes online. There's a pop-up that says, "Are you interested in relocating to Salina? Send in your resume." I send those out to employers. It's a program that's been working really well. We had a really high uptick of resumes submitted in 2021. And right now, this year, we've seen a little bit of a decrease. And I just, I play that off to people. It's a lot of work to update, you know, your resume and to do that call to action. We still continually see the web traffic going to our job site, however, and people clicking on jobs. We are currently working with the county to get essentially a plugin or a widget on the website that allows us to see what jobs they're going, they're checking on, what jobs they're looking at versus right now where they just go out to indeed.com and we can't really see that traffic. But we do know, again, we've seen a lot of web traffic and are getting a lot of good results that way. Next slide, please. This is just real quick, looking at location of these new users. So I talked about all that web traffic. When we first started looking at this in 2021, a majority of our users, a 13.52%, were coming just from within Salina. So we had, I think, a lot of employers, a lot of people that were checking out, which was on the website. And then it kind of, you know, slimmed down from there. In 2022, the majority of our traffic came from Kansas City. We also saw a lot of traffic from Oklahoma City, Wichita, or at least increased traffic from those areas. Salina traffic went down significantly, which is what we kind of hoped for. If they're already living in Salina, certainly we want them to look for jobs here and be doing that job search. But we're really interested in recruiting from outside. Next slide, please. I threw this one in here. This is website users by age. When I first started in 2020, you can see that the highest majority of users for the website was between the ages of 55 and 64 years old. And no offense to our retirees, they are one of our largest economic drivers in Saline County. But that is not who we were looking to attract in Imagine Salina. So we really tried to change up and think about, rethink how we were marketing. And in 2021, those numbers shifted a little bit more. And we saw more higher user use in the 18 to 24 and 25 to 34 age group, and then even that 35 to 44. 2022, we've seen a little bit of an uptick in the older age groups again. But for the most part, we're staying pretty consistent with our younger groups. So we'll continue to monitor that. Next slide, please. This, just real quick, is an interesting visual about where, who has clicked on the Imagine Salina website. Maine, New Hampshire, I think, and Rhode Island are the only states we haven't touched yet in the United States. Otherwise, at least one person from every state has clicked on the Imagine Salina website. So we know we're getting some reach. You can see the heavy amount of traffic is within Kansas itself. That isn't a surprise. But we also get a lot of traffic from Missouri, Oklahoma, Texas. And you can't necessarily see it on here, but we do get a lot of traffic from Arkansas as well. So next slide, please. Within Kansas, and not surprising, our metropolitan areas are where we get a high amount of traffic. We try to work on that, especially in our marketing to those areas of really talking about the getting out of the city, getting to that small-town feel, big-city lights sort of of marketing. So that's definitely something we play in those areas, for sure. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, digital marketing efforts continue. We are focusing on areas of high unemployment and low wages, as well as that geographic area. We also just did an experiment here over this last week or so. There was the manufacturer in Newton that closed down very unexpectedly, 480 employees. We are working with Workforce One and the rapid response on that and hoping to get our employers engaged with those workers if they're looking for a job. But we also did a geo-fence, which is basically a Big Brother sort of digital marketing target on that facility itself. So those workers that are still going in that facility, there was a job hiring thing at that facility, really targeting their phones and talking to them through their phones about the jobs that are available in Salina. So we'll see here in a little while what the response to that was and if we really were able to do something with it. But it's just something kind of new and different to try when we know the best place to reach people is where they're usually at, which is on their phones. We also continue to stay busy with our community tours. I've completed over 20 of those this year already. If an employer has a candidate who's in town for an interview, I will drive them around and show them all the highlights of what Salina has to offer. These are customized, so I let them see exactly what they want to see. If they're interested in schools, if they're interested in arts and humanities and culture, if they're interested in what's going on at Tony's Pizza Event Center. It's whatever their interests are, green spaces, outdoor events, those sorts of things. I'll take them. I'll take them around and take a look. We also have employers, like I mentioned before, who are utilizing the website, the photos, videos, key messaging resources that we've created for them. I always say that employers are really great about being able to sell their own organizations and why it's a great organization to come work for. What we're trying to help them do is sell the community. And a lot of the times, this comes to also selling their families on a relocation move. We know that wages and family are probably the two biggest things that get somebody to move locations, and so if we can help with that family aspect of showing their family, there are things here for them and that they can thrive and prosper in Salina, then that's what we're trying to do for our employers. And then, as I already mentioned, we're working with the county to fund that Job Search API for better accuracy on our job listings, making sure all of our employers are being sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? That their jobs are being listed on that site versus, like I said, they go out to Indeed, and if not, if they're not advertising on Indeed, they may not be covered in that realm. Next slide, please. This is a video. We're going to see Jake ahead. We're going to see if this is going to work. This was collateral that we created recently to try to target young people, as well as to really showcase some of our assets in the community, especially outdoor assets. I always do the caveat, it's a two-minute video. We can include everything that's great about Salina in two minutes, so this is what we decided on for this particular campaign.
Imagine a place that you can call home. A place where you feel free to explore. Where your dreams and ambitions can aspire. And the future is right at your fingertips. Imagine this place and yourself in it. Imagine yourself where inspiration blooms and your next adventure begins. Imagine wide-open spaces in your backyard and a vibrant urban lifestyle right next door. Imagine furthering your education and reaching the next level of your career. Imagine raising your family in a place brimming with life, where untold opportunities grow. Where innovation flourishes and technology advances. Where creativity and imagination thrive and the arts are formed. Where belonging and community is found. Here is where your journey continues and your dreams become reality. Imagine home.
So that's something that we hope our employers are able to use, other people are able to use. Those will be cut up into 30-second commercials that will be.
Imagine yourself at a place where you can grasp excitement.
There's another one. TikTok, Snapchat, other places where, again, we're meeting our target demographic with those, but essentially, again, trying to help provide a visual for what's great about Salina. I'm going to move into a little bit then some of the other things we do outside of the Imagine Salina campaign with workforce development and recruitment. We do try to imply, provide our employers with as many support and resources as we possibly can in terms of hiring, workforce development, recruiting employees. We do webinars, those have included topics on legal immigration, funded micro-internships through the Kansas Board of Regents, the Dan G. Hanson Internships, and other things to help connect them, again, with resources, support, things that can help them in hiring. Next slide, please. We also provided a workforce summit in conjunction with the Salina Human Resource Management Association this last May. We had over 40 attendees at the event representing 35 local employers, so mostly our HR professionals who were there, but provided support, resources, and networking around internships and apprenticeships and alternative talent. That's definitely something, as we now have an office of registered apprenticeships, as we now have these internship opportunities, we're trying to help our employers kind of with that technical assistance of setting those up and figuring those out, because they're amazing tools to be able to retain and keep talent. We want them to use them. Next slide, please. We have a great partnership with USD 305. Held our second Building Bridges event this last year. This is just a way that we invite employers into the school to see what the career and technical education pathways that exist, as well as learn a little bit more about what internships, job shadowing, those sorts of opportunities exist for employers to even engage with our secondary school students. So if they're interested in, you know, coming to a school and doing a guest speaking or providing a job shadowing or providing an internship, this is a way for us to connect the school with them at that time. We do it a lot throughout the year, but this is a great event for them to come into the school and see what's happening. Next slide, please. Our School-to-Career Partnership, this is the partnership, like I said, we have with the school, we help them place their career interns. So our school, and I tell you this as I'm kind of out fellowship with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce and working and talking to workforce development professionals all across the country, we are really above and beyond where most places are in terms of where our secondary schools are at in terms of internship and connecting to the labor force and to our local communities. We are one of the very few that provides internships while they're in secondary school. They do it while they're in school, they receive school credit for it, and they're able to kind of get an idea of what jobs are available in our community and see what they like and what they don't like, which is sometimes just as important. And so they go out, we've got a lot of medical placements, but we also have placed HR, marketing, Feeley Creative, who did the video, I should actually mention that, a local company who did that video for us. We've got an intern in there who was interested in entrepreneurship and building your own new business. So these are just great opportunities. Again, I say a lot, this a lot, but we have young people living here already. It's a matter of keeping them here, and sometimes they're going to go off to college or they're going to go off and explore, but how do we have that tether that brings them back?
Are any of them interning with the city?
I'm not sure. I don't think they are, but we would love to have the city be an intern. So yeah, we do want to continue to grow that. If they're interested in interning with the city, again, any of our employers, we want to create those opportunities for them to build those connections, build those relationships, so that if they do go off to school or if they do go off to kind of see the wide world for a little bit, that when they're ready to come back, and we want them to be ready to come back, that they go, you know, I had a really good experience in Salina, I'm going to go back and get a job there, work for my former, you know, kind of employer. So, next slide, please. We have been working recently to really, we've got this connection with USD 305 and connecting our employers with those students in those schools, really an effort to try to connect our employers with our regent schools and the opportunities that are available to them, as, you know, getting that kind of connection directly to those instructors even, so that when those students are ready to graduate and are looking for a job, that they're getting pushed to Salina as an option. So we held an event with Fort Hays State University. We just had an event with Kansas State University when President Linton was here in town, and really just, I think, both events, we had over 90 people attend those. Employers who were interested in making those connections and building those relationships so that they can kind of have that pathway. Our local Kansas regent schools are part of the educational pipeline, a huge part of it, and we want Salina to get a piece of that pie. So we will continue to hold those events if I have any graduates of Kansas University, Washburn, Pittsburgh, Emporia, Wichita State. I encourage them to reach out to us because we'd love to be able to hold those events here in the community. Next slide, please. I talked a little bit about this, just a little bit more, internships and registered apprenticeships, again, an amazing tool for employers to use to be able to retain talent here in the community and in the state. We're working on technical assistance for our employers with our educational partners and Workforce One. We're working with the Kansas Regents to try to push out the micro-internship program. They have a grant program that you can hire a student from any of the Kansas Board of Regent Schools remotely, and you can get the money to pay that student, or actually, they pay that student directly, to provide usually remote work, data cleaning, social media, marketing, any type of things that they can do remotely, which works for them because they can kind of get that experience in those sort of micro ways and build a portfolio that way. But it works for employers because there's usually those sort of back-burner things that they keep, just keep saying, it needs to get done, it needs to get done, but there's nobody to do it, and this is a great way to get those projects done and paid for. Again, partnering with USD 305 to place our school interns, partnering with the Salina Area Young Professionals to provide summer internship programming. So we're trying to do a little bit more of this and ramp this up when we have those interns here during the summer, some of them from Salina, but many of them from schools outside of Salina, getting them connected to the community and to each other so that they have that sort of social experience and that community connection that hopefully brings them back here. And then we do, I'm helping with a pilot program with the Kansas SHRM, Human Resource Management, to create HR registered apprenticeships here in our community. Next slide, please. As I kind of mentioned a little bit earlier, the Imagine Salina program and the economic development, workforce development arm of the chamber also does business expansion and retention. That's one of the things that kind of falls under our abilities. And so the main goal, and this is just usually visiting with our employers, asking them what their pain points are, asking them if they're experiencing growth, if they're having struggles, really just having those conversations with them so we can keep a pulse on what's going on in our business community and with our businesses, so that hopefully we're not surprised if something really devastating happens, like a shutdown or a major layoff. I'm looking to formalize this process and invest in some software that can help us keep track of those trends. Mostly here, in the time that I've been here, all of these conversations have been around workforce needs and capacity for the most part, but that will most likely change at some point. And then the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce has always done a wage and benefit survey for our members and employers in the community, and I don't think one had been completed since 2018, so we are doing that again this year to be ready by January of 2023. This is important because it helps not only them see what the wages are and competitive wages in the community, but that benefits piece that can sometimes really make a difference, too. Next slide, please. And then along with the economic development that we do over the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, we have our Project Open program, and that's kind of an entrepreneurial infrastructure that we have here. We know that entrepreneurial infrastructure, strong entrepreneurial development also attracts talent to a community as well and keeps talent in a community. Project Open is able to provide a number of different resources, including the business classes that we provide for free through K-State Salina. We had over 51 people attend our business training courses this last year, and we gave over $203,500 in capital through a program we have with Network Kansas, as well as $20,000 in grant funding. And I actually have two Project Open applications sitting on my desk right now that will probably be another $100,000 in access to capital. And that's just huge for our community because access to capital is a major barrier for entrepreneurs, so if we can help work alongside our banks to fill that gap, we see development happen. Next slide, please. You guys are not unaware of housing and the struggles we're having with housing, but the Salina Area Chamber has definitely been very involved in those conversations, working with our economic development partners, working with the city and kind of talking about workforce needs and what they are and how that needs to help. So, you know, we've received $25 million from the state. The Lee Loft will be starting Phase Two here at the beginning of the quarter next year. 80 new loft units are projected with 53 that already currently exist. K-State Salina broke ground on their 104-bed residence hall last March. That should be completed by this next summer. And then we just continue to be involved in the conversations about how we can continue to fill those gaps in housing inventory that we need. Next slide, please. Childcare update. Childcare Aware estimates that Salina is short approximately 971 spots in the county. This is not necessarily for lack of space. We have centers that have space, that have rooms, they just don't have the workers to be able to fill those rooms. So it becomes a workforce development issue with the childcare, as well as childcare being a way to recruit and retain workforce. So it's kind of a chicken egg sort of thing when it comes to childcare. But we are in conversations with the county, with other community partners on how to best utilize that 400K that the county has earmarked for childcare in our community. And then we also, you know, we're able to work alongside Schwann's, and they have contracted with the YMCA to turn the old Montessori school into childcare specifically for their employees. That's about 50 to 60 slots that'll at least take up. So we're kind of chipping away, kind of figuring out, again, how we can address the issue and specifically address a worker shortage for that. Next slide, please. And finally, just moving forward, our priorities. We continue to do, again, our regular digital marketing. We're really trying to be focused on alumni as well. We know that people who lived here at one point and have a familiarity with Salina are more likely to return than somebody who's never been here and doesn't know anything about it. So really focusing on those individuals. We have that new content that I showed that continues to highlight the amenities and quality of life features here in the community, the business retention and expansion, that annual wage and benefit survey that I mentioned, those focused retention efforts around internships and registered apprenticeships, investing in legislative advocacy for further, to further strengthen and support at our federal and state levels. So we are working with a consultant who's going to help us with our legislative agenda this year and really pushing what it is that we need to make workforce and economic development happen here, and then continue to seek out resources and support for our employers and helping them in their needs and their specific workforce needs. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
All right. Commissioner Hoppe. One of the things I've always been curious about is, you know, when we go out to other areas and we're trying to draw workers in, do we do any type of cost of living comparison? Because I've always wondered, if you go to the coast or the bigger cities, the cost, not only the quality of life, I feel is better, but I think the cost of living, even though we've seen a spike in the cost of rentals and the cost of real estate, do we do anything like that when you?
We haven't typically. We do kind of point out that cost of living is like, I think, 9.8% less than the rest of, you know, the national, it might even be up to 15% at this point. But something that I have looked at doing, and I hope to roll out here before too long, is actually having that sort of cost comparison, and you look at maybe Dallas and Denver and, you know, maybe some of the coastal areas, and then Salina, Wichita and Kansas City even, and then includes Salina on that, and just have things like a cup of coffee, you know, gas, some of those kind of items that you'd be able to kind of real quickly see that there is a significant difference there.
There are organizations that do that, isn't that, there are organizations that do that, isn't that correct? They have a bundled, make-believe basket, and I've seen Salina very highly in those.
Right.
We do have a membership to that organization. We are one of those organizations that goes out, we have someone on staff that will go this month, they have.
Eric, could you come up to the?
Yeah.
That's all right.
Not in practice.
We are a member, it's the committee, or it's the Cost of Living Index, it's COLI, and you do pay an annual fee for that, but we do have a staff member that actually goes out and does this. So when you are a member of that, you do the work, you get access to that information that comes back in to compare communities our size across the nation and larger, et cetera. So we have used that a little bit, but not, not all the time in those recruitment efforts.
And I know you talked about giving tours and stuff. How are you currently dealing with the trailing spouse question? That's always a.
Yeah. So with trailing spouses, there are times when they actually bring their spouse with them, and that's awesome because I can include the spouse in the tour, and we go around and I can answer their questions. We do have a packet of collateral that I give whoever the candidate is that, you know, includes all the information about schools, housing, crime, you know, those sorts of things that spouses want to know. The other thing. The other thing that we provide at the Salina Area Chamber, and we have for a long time, is kind of our trailing spouse program where if a candidate is looking to come into the community and they are bringing a spouse or a partner with them, we will take that resume and rotate it around to our community, our employers and HR partners, to help them look for a job as well, so they can also land well here.
Thank you.
Kind of coupling on to the comment about the tours, I'm very curious. First, I'm impressed that you do that, take the time to do that, so that's very commendable. The most common high points that you're asked about, like what your tours, your most common tours, what do they consist of?
So everybody wants to know about housing. That's absolutely number one. They want to take a look around where rental housing might be available, some of the multifamily options as well as other rentals, but also the new developments. You know, they may have already looked online and see where inventory might be available, so they want to look at that. Beyond that is usually schools. They want to know about the schools, what's available, other quality of life. When I have really young individuals who are single or single, no children, they oftentimes want to know about trails, outdoor activities, where they can go to, you know, kayak or paddleboard, or, I mean, that really is something. The dog park is always a big hit with our younger individuals as well. So those are kind of the high notes for sure. I always get asked about crime and what our crime rate is and how we're doing with that. And then otherwise, you know, they love going through downtown and seeing that, you know, the entertainment and shopping options.
Michelle Longbine.
On the housing issue.
Yeah.
Is, is it the rental aspect the bigger issue or purchasing the house?
I think most of our incoming families, it's rental to begin with because there's not a lot of inventory on the market, and so they see immediately that they may not be able to just come in and buy a home at the price point that they want. It may be there in the future, so they're looking to rent somewhere short term, and that's really where their question is at, is like, okay, if I don't find a house, then I need to be able to find a place to stay until we do find that home.
Yeah. And from what I understand, the workforce, these employers are hiring a lot of people, but they're not retaining them.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any studies to figure out what it takes to?
Yeah, there's nothing.
Make a 30-year career?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's mostly anecdotal. There's not a whole lot of studies as far as, especially here, specific to Salina and Saline County. We do have a lot of employees that hop around from employer to employer, you know, go to the next, you know, best wage. So we know anecdotally that happens. We know anecdotally that people have left because they couldn't find housing, so that's been an issue here more recently. But I don't have any, I don't have any study that I could point to and say, this is specifically what's, what's happening and why people aren't staying.
And a lot of people have roots here in Salina that came here with the Schilling Air Force Base. It's amazing how many people stayed or were connected or came back. What is being done at the three colleges here? I know a lot of kids come from out of the region. To retain those kids, is there?
Yeah, no, I mean, we actually just had a meeting last week with that group, Dr. Starkey and Dr. Thompson, and certainly Greg Nichols participates as well, KU participates. But there definitely is a desire to retain those students, obviously, and keep them here. And a lot of that comes from how do we get those students into the community and get them involved and get them connected? And how do we help them feel like they belong here? A lot of times, if they're out of state and they don't have, you know, families close or whatever, how do we get them connected in other ways? And so there's all sorts of retention efforts that happen around that. It is difficult if they have family that doesn't live here. I mean, we just know that family is just a huge part of what keeps people around, and if they don't have family here, they're just not as likely to stick around. But we do try every effort we can to try to get those students to stay here by creating family for them here.
Yeah, I know Wesleyan does a good job of that.
Yeah.
Pushing kids to, in the service work in the community.
Exactly.
Get them involved.
Exactly. Yeah.
You talk about K-State Salina, that job misalignment. With One Vision Aviation, there's a much better opportunity for them. The other one, Salina Tech, I mean, they're placing 96, 97% of their graduates even before they graduate or get through the program. So it gets back to this talent pipeline. How are we filling that talent pipeline? And that's how that works. You might touch on the military recruitment we've done as well.
Yeah, so you talked about Schilling. We also have a good relationship over at Fort Riley, and so when those veterans transition or those service members transition out of service, they have a manufacturing courses through the Manufacturing Institute that they do there, and then we provide tours for them here. They come to Schwans, they come to Great Plains, they come to Strighton, they come to some of our major manufacturers and some of our smaller ones even, to see firsthand the jobs and opportunities that are available here. And so they may be coming from Florida or becoming from Michigan or coming from all over the country, but we try to show them, you know, that there are jobs, high-paying, premium jobs available to them here. And so that's just another way we try to, again, retain folks that are here and see if we can keep them here.
Yeah, a little history. Many of the original employees at Tony's were waiting wives out of the Schilling.
Yep.
Housing area. Is there any data on the colleges, what percentage of kids come from out of the region?
I'm sure there is. I'd have to, I'd have to gather that. I don't have it on my, at my fingertips, but I'd be happy to gather that for you.
Wesleyan, there's all kinds of out of state.
Yes, no, they definitely do. Colorado and California and Texas especially.
I'm taking up all the time.
Oh, I just wanted to comment that I think the schools, career and the internships, those are great because you get an opportunity to teach people about Salina culture. I piqued my interest, whether the city was participating, that working for a government is also a kind of culture that you got to educate people to, about. Do you have any insight about why the 16- to 19-year-olds aren't working, or are they self-employed and monetizing themselves on YouTube or something like that?
Well, they are, they are self-employed through means of their parents. I mean, accumulated wealth and wealth has just grown to a place where, you know, again, when I was growing up, I'm sure when many of you were growing up, if I wanted a car, if I wanted to drive around, I was paying for the insurance, I was paying for the gas, you know, I needed a job to be able to do that. And parents these days just want more for their children in those ways, and they provide the car and they provide the gas, and they want them to focus on school and focus on sports and extracurricular activities. And again, not placing any value judgment on any of that, but it is a sign of the times, I guess, that that's kind of where our culture has gone. And so those kids don't work because they don't need to or aren't being pushed to as we kind of work.
It's the parents' fault.
What I'm going to do, since we have to start the other meeting at four o'clock.
Yeah.
If anyone would like to talk with Stuckslaw or Mr. Brown before they leave, catch them up here, and we will be back here at four o'clock.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, it is just after four o'clock. Today is December 12th, and this is the Salina City Commission Weekly Meeting. I'll ask the city clerk if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hopick.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any awards and proclamations, but I would like to read a letter that was given to one of our citizens who reached the milestone of a 100th birthday this past weekend. I'm hoping she's watching on TV since I couldn't get to her party Friday. This is Mrs. Virginia Garrels. Dear Virginia, as mayor of Salina, it is a great honor for me to extend to you the very best wishes from our community on the occasion of your 100th birthday celebration. Such a milestone as this deserves to be recognized and celebrated by all of us as we share in the joy of this moment. We hope your year will be filled with laughter, love, and good health. As a commemoration, the Salina City Commission, City of Salina staff, and citizens, we're proud to award you a key to the city for your citizenry that makes this city, state, and country a better place. Congratulations, and may you continue to be blessed. Signed, Trent Davis, Mayor of Salina. The, now I'll ask the city manager to update a little further, but in two days, Wednesday evening, we will be having a citywide discussion on homelessness in Salina. And while I'll ask the city manager to address the specifics, I would just ask that when citizens come to speak, it's okay to practice what you want to say at home beforehand so you can get as much out in a shorter period of time. That way, more people get a chance to speak. It's okay if you say something that somebody else has said, but after about the 800th time, we'll probably assume there's general agreement on that position. And we don't want to be caustic or biting in our remarks. This is not a blame-finding session, but we're looking for solutions. We need to walk out of there as a community smarter than we walk in that room. So, you know, if you're doing something, if your group or your church, your family is doing something that maybe we can emulate or expand, bring good ideas. This is not just a gripe session. We've been gripe here at the end of our meeting, believe it's agenda item, whatever it is, every Monday if you want to gripe, but we're looking for solutions Wednesday night. The agenda is probably not officially part of this agenda, but it is posted.
Correct, it has been distributed. And so, as you mentioned, it's at 6:00 PM on Wednesday of this week, the 14th. It's at the Salina Grace Community Resource Center. A lot of people refer to that as the former American Legion building. It's at 142 South 7th Street here in Salina. It is a, the intended format is a moderated panel discussion. There are a number of representatives of different agencies that have been asked to participate in that panel. The panel members or the agencies include the Central Kansas Mental Health Center, Central Kansas Mental Health Foundation, Catholic Charities, Salina Grace, Ashby House, and then interim chief Morton will be speaking from a police department perspective. Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager, will be providing remarks as it relates to legal constraints and considerations. And I think what kind of started this conversation were questions of you and citizens forum about the legal options to address homelessness, and we'll certainly cover that topic as well as some of the underlying issues that contribute to homelessness. And then, as the mayor mentioned, there will be opportunity for questions and comments from the commissioners as well as citizen comments. So, trying to manage our time, but include some of the players in the community that contribute to responding to homelessness and might be able to provide some perspective on what they see, both in terms of trends as well as problems and solutions, maybe.
And this will be available live on the YouTube?
On YouTube. With it being an offsite location, it'll be livestreamed on YouTube, and then it'll be later broadcast on cable TV. If anyone wants to submit comments, they can do so by emailing the city manager's office, but there will not be a Zoom link for interactive communication as part of that presentation offsite.
And one thing, and I don't get on YouTube a lot, but on the link that's listed here on the agenda, there is a period between the U and B in Tube. Is that the way it normally is?
I'm going to need to defer to other technical experts, but I believe that is correct.
So, did not notice that, so thank you. We'll look into that, so see about modifying.
Okay, so that should just be T-U-B, and then the period?
I strongly believe so that is the case.
Okay.
I got that, that link is put up there, we'll see if it, so we'll investigate that and modify that if it needs to be modified.
All right.
But I believe it is, there is no period there.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of December 5, 2022. 5.2, approve resolution number 22-8094, adopting financial policies for the city of Salina. Item 5.3, award the contract for project number 22032, Markley Road Trail, Berkeley Family Recreation Area, to TNR Construction, Inc. of Salina, in the amount of $61,805.33, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $64,895.60, and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with TNR Construction, Inc. of Salina upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Thank you. Are the items the commissioner-elect have withdrawn from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove item 5.3.
All right. And any action to be taken on items 5.1 and 5.2?
Mayor, I move we approve items 5.1 and 5.2 as presented.
Second? Been moved in second to approve items 5.1 and 5.2 in the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. 5.3, let me see who, you'll take it? Okay. All right. Did you have a specific, one particular question or clarification, or?
Yeah, my big question here, let me get the map. Where's this trail going to go after this? We got all this old runway over here.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to continue trail to the north?
Well, I didn't think so. The, you're in, basically, the point of the trail was to get into the park and then get you to a concrete surface, which gets you to the old runway, to Berkeley, the Barclay Park is there as well, or we have bike lanes along Markley Road as well. So, you kind of have a couple of options. If you're on a bike, you just can go out on the Markley Road. It's a nice 10-foot bike lane. If you're walking, all people walk in that, in that area, just walk down the runway. So, it's a continuous path on the runway all the way to Crufford.
Okay, so, so as far as the bike hike path, this is where?
I think it'll probably stop here unless there's some reason.
Stop here, okay.
Somebody has some better idea, but it's just, plenty of concrete there already.
Right, and then possibly focus on Magnolia?
Yes, south.
Going back to the east.
Yep, south and east, that's, or west.
Yeah, west.
As we, yeah, south of the, where this ends is just, south of the subdivision there for Magnolia Hills, but yeah, we've kind of got a gap to get to Magnolia, and then we've definitely got the large gap from Magnolia over to the soccer fields there. So, it's, that's kind of the next push, I guess, someday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public on this item? All right. Entertaining the motion?
Mayor, I move we approve 5.3, awarding the contract for project number 22032, Markley Road Trail, Berkeley Family Recreation Area, to TR Construction, TNR Construction, Inc. of Salina, in the amount of $61,805.33, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $64,895, and authorizing the city manager to create a contract with TNR Construction, Inc. of Salina upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve, what I will refer to as project number 22032. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. We can go to administration.
Item 6.1, approve resolution number 22-8097, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with First Choice Security LLC for security services at the Salina Municipal Court.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Brenda Stoss, Municipal Court Judge. We have for your consideration today, resolution number 228097, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with First Choice Security LLC for providing security services at the municipal court. The Kansas Legislature passed the Personal and Family Protection Act back in 2013, which, among other things, provided that a municipal government could not limit the carrying of concealed weapons unless adequate security measures were provided. At the time the legislation was enacted, an evaluation among city staff determined that municipal court would be an appropriate facility to provide adequate security measures and prohibit the carrying of concealed weapons. Adequate security is provided with the installation of a metal detector, and that requires staffing then anytime that the building is open to the public. The city most recently entered into a contract in 2018 with Smart Security, which began providing security services in 2019. That contract was then renewable for successive one-year periods for up to three years, which the contract did run its entire course of the renewals. We then released a request for proposals with the end of that contract term and received two proposals. One was from Smart Security, and one was from First Choice Security LLC. The contract price for Smart Security was $21.82 an hour, and the contract price for First Choice was $22 an hour. Staff's recommendation is to enter into an agreement with First Choice Security. The primary reason is the staffing capacity of the two agencies. Smart Security's proposal states they have five licensed armed security guards in the Salina area that could provide security services at the court, and First Choice has 44 armed security guards that are licensed and could provide service to the court. With that staffing level, it helps ensure that we don't need to call on services from police officers to provide backup for any staffing issues that might arise with the security company. The recommendation, we believe, is consistent with the city's purchasing policy, which states that the selection of a vendor to perform professional services should be based on qualifications of the best proposal for the project. The terms of the contract under this new agreement are consistent with the contract that we had previously with Smart Security. So, the options that we have for you today are to approve resolution 228097, awarding the contract for security services at municipal court to First Choice Security LLC. Option two would be to approve the resolution with an amendment to award the contract to Smart Security. Option three, provide direction to staff on alternate action to be taken for security services at municipal court. Option four, postpone consideration of the resolution and provide staff with direction on additional information, which could result in the possible lapse of security measures at the court. And then option five would be to vote to deny the resolution and not award a contract for security services, which would result in the court being open to citizens carrying concealed weapons into the court, and staff's recommendation is option one. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Start with Commissioner Longbine.
Is this for a one-year contract?
It's one-year term, automatically renewal, renewable for up to three years unless notice is given that either party does not want it to renew at the end. So, it's a calendar year contract for one year. It automatically renews unless notice is given that we don't want to renew.
It'll lock in that rate?
Correct.
Mr. Ryan?
Have we had an issue with Smart Security not being able to fulfill their obligation at the courts?
We have, we have had a couple of occasions. They have in, for most of the contract period, have one primary guard that works most of the time, and then they have backup staff if that person's on vacation or ill. There have been a couple of occasions where, just due to some normal things, somebody's not there when we are ready to open the doors, and so our court officer will staff the door until the security guard arrives. It hasn't been a major problem, but there have been occasions.
I know, I know we're short on the police staff, so it just would hinder us. The one question that I thought of is I realize that they have to carry liability insurance and stuff. Is there a minimum amount of training or education that these individuals have to have, whether you're using Smart or First Choice? Do they have, is there a certain amount of training?
Well, they're required to be licensed by the city.
Okay.
So, I can't speak to exactly what the requirements are for the license for an armed guard, but that is a requirement.
But they are, okay.
Yeah.
Nice, okay.
I can't speak to training specifically either without digging into that.
That's fine. I just, but either location, they're both licensed the same way?
Correct.
Through the state, okay.
Through the city.
Through the city.
We license them locally, yes. Right.
And one question, referring to the RFP, it's mentioned that some information requested was not provided in the Smart Security proposal. Is that a deal-breaker information that was not provided? And if it's not proper to disclose it, respect that.
No, the, the primary thing was, one of the specific questions was what equipment would be provided to the guards, and Smart Security did not elaborate on that. First Choice provided specifically that their guards carry handcuffs, tasers, other non-lethal type of weapons in addition to their weapon. So, that was the primary difference as far as disclosure in response to the RFP.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions, comments from the public? And none online. Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 22-8097, awarding the contract for security services at municipal court to First Choice Security LLC.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 22-8097. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you, and Judge Stoss, podium is yours. 6.2.
Item 6.2, approve resolution number 22-8098, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Julie Effenbeck to provide indigent council services for the Salina Municipal Court.
Brenda Stoss, Municipal Court Judge. Resolution 228098 is asking to approve a new agreement for indigent council services with Julie Effenbeck. The court is obligated to provide indigent defense services in a case where an individual could face the possibility of a jail sentence if convicted in the case. We have used for a number of years a three-panel service to provide that. It's, works very well for the court. It helps avoiding conflicts of interest with the attorneys in representing different defendants. Each attorney is assigned a specific day that they have their caseloads and all of their appearances, so we try to accommodate the attorneys in that manner as much as we can. Most recently, we had a contract with Andrea Swisher, and she sent notice in October that she had been selected by the governor to serve as a district court judge and would have to terminate her contract with municipal court. So, in response to that, we reached out to Julie Effenbeck, who had, in a prior request for interest, had expressed an interest in serving on the panel. We met with Julie and talked about that, and she has agreed to take on a contract. So, we are requesting today that that contract be approved on the same terms as our other two attorneys are currently serving under, which is $3,500 a month, flat rate, for providing the indigent council services at municipal court. The contract does also provide for additional compensation for appeals to district court and beyond. So, the option before you today are to adopt the resolution, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Julie Effenbeck to provide indigent council services for the municipal court. Option two would be to adopt the resolution with amendments, or option three to deny the resolution, and staff recommends option one, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If I could, I'd add one additional detail. We did make it known to the Salina Bar Association that the position was available, didn't have interest, and so we kind of revisited, Ms. Effenbeck, who previously indicated interest. So, ran an open process, and then ultimately ended up reaching out to Ms. Effenbeck.
Thank you. There's not questions? All right, any questions, comments from the public? Bring it back for action.
Mayor Davis, I move we adopt resolution number 22-8098, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Julie Effenbeck to provide indigent council services for the Salina Municipal Court.
I'll second that.
Right, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 22-8098. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you, and move to development business.
Item 7.1, approve ordinance number 22-11138 on first reading, annexing a 20-foot strip of land in Shilling subdivision number five.
Thanks, Mayor, Commissioners. Surveyor, in preparation of his 2022 corporate boundary resolution, the surveyor identified that there's a 20-foot gap between the Shilling Air Force Base annexation, which occurred in 1966, and the more recent annexation of the aeroplanes addition. And this stems from the fact that there was a 20-foot strip of land between a section line in the west edge of a rail right away that was not annexed in 1966 or in subsequent annexation applications. So, this request has been submitted by the city surveyor to close a gap in the city limit boundary, but this will also ensure that all the drainage channel work that the city is undertaking will occur within the city limits. Most of the unannexed area lies within a drainage channel that runs between the railroad tracks and the property to the west. This is property that's surrounded by the city on all four sides, so it can be unilaterally annexed by the city commission, but it's helpful to have consent from the owners because that eliminates the need for any notices or resolutions or public hearings. So, city staff met with Tim Rogers, the airport authority, and George Plant, who owns the Smoky Valley Winery there. Mr. Plant was concerned or had questions about how, what this might mean from a property tax mill levy standpoint, and what we determined is that every official map that the city and county have already show this in the city limits, and so all of Mr. Plant's property is being taxed as if it is within the city limits. Only the city surveyor seems to know that it's not because the two descriptions in the annexation ordinances don't close with each other. So, there would be no fiscal impact on the owners from this action, and we are about to construct a culvert that would go from the aeroplanes addition out to Centennial Road, and by annexing this, we won't have 20 feet of the culvert outside the city limits. So, this will just close that gap. So, we've tried to time this up so it could coordinate with the corporate boundary resolution at your December 19th meeting, so your options this evening would be to approve the attached annexation ordinance on first reading. You could postpone consideration of this request to a future meeting date if you feel like additional information needs to be provided, or you could decline to approve the attached ordinance, which would leave this strip of land outside the city limits. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have, but we have met with both landowners. They understand that there's, there was just a inadvertent gap that got left, and it wasn't noticeable till aeroplanes got annexed because there was nothing on the east side to create a gap. So, again, I'd be open to any questions commissioners might have.
Any questions at this end? All right, any questions, comments from the public? All right, bring it back to action.
Mayor, I move the commission could approve ordinance number 22-11138 on first reading, annexing this 20-foot wide strip of land into the city. This would eliminate a gap in the city limit border and ensure that the entire length of approved drainage channel is inside the city.
Second? Right, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-11138 on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. And this will be brought back for second reading next week. Thank you. 7.2.
Item 7.2, approve ordinance number 22-11139 on first reading, changing the zoning district classification from C1 to PC2 for property located at 1001 Shipple Drive to allow a former veterinary clinic to be converted to a beauty salon.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. The property that is the subject of this application is the former Town and Country Vet Clinic, which is at the northeast corner of Shipple Drive and Fawn Street, and that building was originally constructed in 1977 and has been used as a small animal hospital since that time until it became vacant when Town and Country Vets relocated to a newly constructed facility on South Ohio. And so, this property has been vacant and on the market since that relocation, and so the, the original facility as built was built as a veterinary clinic. It has 2,800 square feet, and it had eight off-street parking spaces along the east side of the property. And city staff met with Ben Burton and Gavin Schmidt of Manhattan, Kansas, and they have entered into a contract to purchase this property contingent on it being able to be rezoned for use as a beauty salon with multiple salon spaces for multiple operators. They have a similar operation in Manhattan and looked at this as a location that would be suitable for that. be suitable for that. The issue arises from the fact that the C-one restricted business district is primarily an office district and does not allow beauty salons, so they applied for Plan C-two zoning specifically to allow only beauty salons as an additional permitted use. So your role in looking at this is to review the request for the change in zoning and use and determine whether that change in use to a hair and nail salon would be compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property. And so we've summarized some of the differences between C-one and C-two. This area is somewhat unique, and we have just a pocket of C-one zoning that extends from Fawn over to Ohio and from Cloud to Shipple, and most of the developed sites in that area are office uses, but there is a great deal of C-three zoning along the Ohio corridor as well as some C-two. So what the request is here is to change the zoning from the current C-one to C-two, but only to allow the beauty salon as a permitted C-two use. So we have all the utilities and services have been in place since 1977, and they are adequate. The one thing that's being proposed differently as far as access and parking is that they're proposing to construct a driveway that would loop around the building and have a direct driveway connection to Fawn. So this is currently two-way, and it's ninety-degree parking over here. You have to back out and go back out on Shipple. They're proposing to construct a loop that would come around and have a driveway connection here. So there were some questions about traffic patterns and generation. However, it's been observed by staff and also in conversations with other business and property owners in that area that even if this were the only in-and-out, most of the traffic comes out and goes up Fawn to get to Clouds, so you can get to Ohio where there's a traffic signal and it's easier to make left turns. So they're not, other than some modifications and cleanup of the landscaping and to lighten the color of the building to make it more of an earth tone and the construction of the additional parking, they're not proposing any major changes or additions to the building. This request also includes this vacant lot to the north, which they acquired, and they acquired that primarily to make sure that if it's demonstrated that additional parking is needed in the future, that they have a place where they could expand. But their plan, based on the usage inside, would be to increase the off-street parking from eight spaces to twenty-eight spaces, and one of the residents who came to the planning commission hearing observed when they had multiple veterinarians operating within that space that a good number of the employees parked on Fawn, because there's only eight spaces in the lot. So by going from eight to twenty-eight spaces, that should eliminate some of that on-street parking. So the planning commission held a public hearing on this. They voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request, and the primary condition being that the only C-two use that would be allowed would be a beauty salon, and all of the other C-one regulations would stay in place. So, for instance, the C-one district has a thirty-foot height limit that would remain in place. The C-one district allows ground signs but not pole signs. That would remain in place. So the primary goal was to allow the use but to make sure that the property maintained its current appearance. So your options this evening would be to approve the attached ordinance on first reading, rezoning this property to Plan C-two. You could send this item back to the planning commission if you disagree with their recommendation and provide them guidance with the aspects that you disagree with. You could postpone consideration this evening if you have some specific items that you'd like to be addressed by the applicant or staff before taking action, or you could deny the request. This has come to you in two recommendations. One was a recommendation to approve the rezoning. The other recommendation was to approve their plan, their site plan for reuse of the property. Both of those aspects are incorporated into the ordinance that's before you this evening, so unless you have changes or modifications to the plan, you can address this in a single motion, adopting the ordinance on first reading.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoppick, any questions? Mr. Lankowitz, done here.
I just commend them for using an existing building.
Yeah, they, you saw the illustrations from what they've done in Manhattan, so they did a good job of casting what their vision was, and most of the people that we talked to that were interested in this building, most of them had uses that wouldn't have fit in C-one, and most of them had uses that would probably be more objectionable to the neighbors, so this does appear to be a good fit for that building. Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the public? All right, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve ordinance number twenty-two one-one-one-three-nine on first reading, changing the zoning district classification from C-one to PC-two for a property located at one-thousand-one Shipple Drive to allow a former veterinary clinic to be converted to a beauty salon.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash one-one-one-three-nine on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. And now I'll go to seven point three.
Item seven point three, special event permits. Seven point three A, approve ordinance number two-two dash one-one-one-four-one on first reading, amending chapter six of the city code by adding an article to be numbered, Article Five, regarding the authorization and regulation of special event activities, integrating the subject matter of related existing code provisions regarding specific types of special events, including carnivals, circuses, and tent shows, and special event use of city-owned public parking lots, and repealing those related existing code sections previously required to regulate special events, including section zero-six dash sixteen, zero-six seventeen thirty-five dash two fifty-six through thirty-two, I'm sorry, two fifty-six-point-one through thirty-two dash two fifty-six-point-four. Then item seven point three B is approved resolution number two-two dash eight zero nine-nine, establishing fees for special event permits, percentage chapter six, Article Five.
That's a mouthful.
I know, I'm clearly trying to win an award for the world's longest ordinance title.
While I'm thinking of it, I think the city clerk just stumbled across a typo in the ordinance. So I believe that's supposed to be section thirty-five two fifty-six-point-one through thirty-five two fifty-six-point-four, so that second citation to thirty-two, I believe, should be a thirty-five? I'm asking.
We can do some research while you're talking. I'll look at the code.
I feel like we have been on this journey for a while. Like, I should start my staff report off with, "Once upon a time." In 2018, we started talking about downtown, and we took our first big steps after developing all the infrastructure to make downtown feel like it does now. The lights, the hardscape, the landscape, all those different pieces. We realized that we needed more to activate that space, and in order to activate that space, we needed some rules and regulations that talked about how people could entertain, operate, act, perform, do whatever they needed to do in that space to give it the feel that we wanted it to have. With that, we met with the city commission in a study session, asked for permission to start creating regulations, which are now called the ACE District, or Arts, Commerce, and Entertainment District. As part of that, we formed a very large stakeholder group with various members of SDI, business owners, neighbors, residents, along with our major higher education partners, just about everybody we could get to come to the meeting who might be interested in this journey through downtown. And we partnered Development Services with Arts and Humanities and had conversations with many other departments in the city who are impacted through downtown activity such as Public Works and Parks and Rec. And then SDI has been a major partner in this. You know, a lot of this is bringing some of their vision to fruition and how we could be good partners in that. As part of that process, it's pretty hard not to talk about special events. We have these wonderful plazas that we've created. Well, how do you behave in those spaces? Where do you rent them from? How much does it cost? You know, once you get it, how long can you stay there? We have parades, and we have races, and I want to have a block party, or I'd like to close everything down and have a sidewalk sale. How does that all work? How could we make that happen? Well, if you kind of separated out specialty uses, like being able to sell on the sidewalk as a merchant in front of your store, or a busker wanting to play guitar on the corner, and we got to those bigger things, right? Parades, races, street fairs, whatever, those things where we had to close roads, we had to get city services involved, those are really what we consider special events. But we found in the stakeholder groups, we couldn't separate those things. We were going to have to deal with special events. If we take stock of where we were at, we have had a special event permit for a number of years. It is fairly lengthy. I believe, last time I checked, it was a little over ten pages. It's a lot of questions, but each event is unique. Each event has a lot of details, and so in order for staff to even just kind of get a feel for what's going on, there are a lot of questions that need to be asked. What we found out from the public, from applicants, from the stakeholder group, is that application alone was very daunting, and most people didn't know how to approach that. And without staff assistance, kind of sitting down and going through each part of that, essentially us becoming kind of co-party planners, it was also hard to get successful applications. There are definitely exceptions to that rule, Riverfest, KKOA, some of our bigger events that do this time and time again, but many of those that don't happen that regularly or are new to it were very challenged by the process. Equally, this process was a challenge for staff. There are a number of departments that have to review a special event permit, getting the coordination of where barricades are getting dropped off, where police need to be stationed, who's stopping at the plaza to turn on electrical and water, all these different things. Is that even zoned to allow that? Is the building permits or the electrical permits issued? All these different pieces. Coordinating that takes a significant amount of finesse and city resources, so that was something we also knew, is that we needed some kind of permit to pull that all together. One of the other challenges we faced was not only getting incomplete applications, but when we got them. My favorite call is on a Friday. "So I'm having this thing on Tuesday? Oh, how many people do you think you're going to have? I don't know, we're thinking like three hundred. Can we close down this road?" Uh, and right now, you know, we try to accommodate as much as we can, but there's really not a lot that creates a situation where staff can say, "Yes, but it takes these resources to accomplish that," or, "No, it's not safe. We don't have enough police officers to cover regular shifts. You can't pull them on to parade duty. No, we don't have enough barricades, because I've already got them at another event that was actually more planned out." There's just a whole variety of details, but without being aware of these things in advance, it made it very difficult to process these. There's also no fines, no fees, and no timelines. So you basically had a really long permit. We'd like you to turn it in, and then we'd try to move it through the system. It is important to have a community that's engaged, has these special events, but at the same time, we could do this better. And Mike has said, or City Manager Skreg has said a number of times, that this has been in the too-hard pile, and part of that is just because it touches so many different parts of the city and has so many overlapping pieces. If you saw the manual, which I hope you did in the packet, it's kind of a doozy, but it, all those pages start to combine kind of this whole story. Well, you want to rent something in the parks? You're going to put up a tent? You know, where do your tent stakes go? Did you talk to them? What signs have you put up? All these multi-layered pieces. So what this all boils down to is we have compiled an ordinance, a new application, a manual, and a resolution. The ordinance is what creates the brick-and-mortar rules and regs to operate the process, essentially formalizing the process that we've kind of had in the past but never really made permanent. It talks about all the essential things. When something has to be turned in? Where does it get turned in? What has to be turned in with the application? Are there attachments? How long do we have to process it? Is there a fee to review something? Is there a fine for not doing what you said you'd do? What happens if you don't do what you said you'd do? Do we come and cancel your event? How do refunds occur? All those technicalities of what it takes to run the process. The resolution itself is what's going to take those fees and put them into two-dash-two, which is where all of our fees and fees go. The manual, as I mentioned, is kind of that verbal, kind of, it's like staff getting to sit there with you and kind of go through this step by step and explain all these different pieces. You want to know about tents? Well, the second half, A to Z, turn to T. We got tents. You know, you want to know about alcohol permits? Go to A. That's where you'll find the alcohol permit information. It's a really tactile manual to kind of walk people through that, in addition to the kind of overall general steps. And then lastly is the application itself. So I'm going to start with the application and hit some of the high points from the packet and answer some specific questions if you have them, but also, I think, kind of clarify some of the things that have been brought to my attention over the last couple of days. So the application, I think from a staff and an applicant point of view, is probably one of the most exciting parts. It's actually not something you need to adopt. We're working with GovBuild, who is our new website provider, who's building that site. What we're trying to do in the application is, it's actually multi-tier logistics, so a lot of times if you take a survey or something online and you're going to take that, I should say logic, multi-tier logic, if you take and say yes, no, it'll give you one more question. Well, we're going four or five levels of logic in, in order for the applicant to not have ten pages of questions anymore, if they don't really need ten pages of questions. So as you kind of saw, and they didn't print out all that great, but we gave you some printouts of just what our drafts look like at the moment, but there's, the first tab is kind of these initial questions. Depending on how you answer those initial questions, the permit actually builds itself. So if you have alcohol in your event, yes, no? No, then you're not going to get the alcohol tab. Do you have animals in your event? Yes, no? Well, then you're going to get the animal tab. There are some tabs that are going to be general. Everybody's got to tell us about parking and bathrooms, location, things like that. So I think that's really going to kind of customize that experience. Everything is meant to be tagged and loaded in there, so you need proof of insurance? Just upload it in the application. Each page of the application is savable, so you woke up at three o'clock in the morning and want to start applying for your event and ran out of steam? Well, cool, you can come back to it in a few hours. It's not going anywhere. But that's the thing, is you can't also do that in the middle of the night. You want to walk yourself through the manual? So essentially, you'll kind of end up in a landing page. You'll either be able to fill out the application, or you'll be able to go through the manual, and it's going to be digital. You can still get it in a PDF, but you can also click through it online and kind of walk yourself, literally from A to Z, through special event permitting, all at one spot. You'll be able to pay online as well. Let's see, so the manual and the application go digital. I think this is probably the best time to talk about kind of how we broke these pieces up. One of the things that the stakeholder group learned is you couldn't have just one permit for everybody. There's a big difference between having twelve people show up to a plaza that sing Christmas carols and a thousand people party, you know, and closing several streets. They're holding, you know, for instance, a Riverfest. They're not the same thing. So how did we break those down and find a way to kind of treat the more complex events and the simpler events differently? The two key elements we looked at were, what is the level of service you need? If you need city services, you're kind of beyond basic. The basic is, you're just going to The basic is, you're just going to show up somewhere and you got to let us know? Cool. But if you need more, then that's where it starts to kind of click up in those different advanced levels. In addition to needing city services, we distinguish between those that have road closure and those that don't. Here's a whole nother element that comes in and we start affecting traffic. We also looked at the number of people. It is, it is just how it works. I mean, you take 50 people and 200 people, they're going to have a different impact on the environment. Even if you're just in a plaza, I mean, the, the amount of parking they need, the amount of bathrooms they need, the amount of trash that accumulates. So you can't ignore the number of people in an event either. So we combined that with level of service. Last but not least, we separated parades and races. They are kind of their own thing. And so we built those into the application process. And one of the things we identified were predetermined races and parades and new self-prescribed or, or unique races and parades. We have, over the years, working with PD, General Services, Parks and Rec, just about everybody who's involved with a parade or a race, and identified, these are race routes we know. We know exactly how many barricades it takes. We know exactly how many police officers it takes. We know on average how long that will take, how many entries should be in there. I have a lovely spreadsheet that breaks these down, literally race by race, parade by parade. These predetermined routes. Our concept here is if you come and want to do one of our regular race routes, we know what it takes to do that. We can permit that fast. But if you want something unique and different, that comes at a cost and it takes time because all that will need to be re-vetted and refigured out. So the predetermined race and parade routes are a big feature in this and have a lot of efficiencies to them. That's kind of a good segue to what does it cost? What are the fees associated with this? I know it's a little different to see fees associated with some of these events because we've really never done that before. So an existing fee that's not a special event fee, but it is a parade fee, is parade fees as per our 2021 fee schedule were $33. I'll start with fees and what they cost for parades. There's a table in the blue sheet. So if you look at that table, we have two parade types, Parade A and Parade B. Parade Type A includes what we consider school routes. This does not mean you have to be a school to use them, but they are commonly used by the high schools and universities for their homecoming. We thought, okay, we're going to give those a zero. There's not a lot of traffic closure. They usually just have some PD guidance. Just to give you an idea of what it costs to kind of set up for that, the Parade Route 1 is $628.80 to operate per parade and Parade Route 2 is $945.05 for us to operate. Parade routes Type B, these are what we commonly think of for downtown. There's a slightly longer route and there's a slightly shorter route. We thought, okay, if you're going to impact downtown, we're going to have to have those levels of resource. We don't want to necessarily stop our classic parades like our Christmas parade and the fair and stuff like that, but it does have to have some monetary relationship to that. So the short parade route actually costs us $2,576.16 per parade. The longer parade route costs us $2,588.16 per parade. So there's no way are these fees recouping what it cost us to do these things. You'll notice in our fee table, we have the permit fee, then we have an application fee. So typically you'll see these most common in planning and building permits where just getting through the permit process is a, an adventure itself, because that's usually where the application, we're looking for completeness, and that's where a lot of the work happens upfront. What you don't want to do is have people just kind of throw something out there, get through that permit or that application process and go, ah, I'm good. Well, we've just spent hundreds of staff hours tracking that all down. So if you want that level of resources, you at least got to come up with your application fee. Once your application fee is paid, that's kind of basically a payment of seriousness. I am serious about this event and want these resources to go into figuring it out. Then from there, there are other fees that apply basically to just put it on. So you have the application fee and the permit fee based on those uses. Additionally, we have a late fee. What we decided to do is, what we knew staff was going to happen, is we would set a cutoff date and people were going to come in and say, oh, but I just need another few days. And what I didn't want to do was have to go to the city manager's office every time that happened or to have to come to you to say, oh, we need you to make an exception. Here's our date. We put some wiggle room in there. Those dates that are set as the application deadline are the most optimal dates. If you want everything to happen the way you want it to, if it's legal and allowed, that's how you're going to get it to happen, because it's given us enough time to get the resources, to get all that coordination down. But if you want to try and squeeze in, all right, we'll give you a late cutoff date. I can't promise you you're going to get everything and you get to pay for it. It's three times as much, because it's three times the cost to the city to make this happen for you. There are other things people are doing that are just as valuable to a different citizen to not have to stop and completely do something different. So if you're going to wait to the last minute, it comes at a cost. But we wanted to create that because it never seems to go away. There's always going to be somebody who's last minute, who's just got to do this thing right now. So, okay. To the same vein with races, we were able to calculate these fees as well. They're a little hard to do on just other general events, because I just don't know enough of the details, but the predetermined race routes are prescribable and we really can come with those costs. If you look at the races which are in Permit Type 4 Advanced, we have Race Type A. This includes Bill Burke, Jerry Ivy, the soccer-run complex routes. These are positioned there because they're actually not terribly difficult for us to do. They're kind of contained in the parks and they don't have a lot of traffic interaction. So there's really about zero impact for us because of where they're at. But Race Type B includes Lakewood and Oakdale and Kenwood. Those are fairly expensive races. Lakewood is $563.26 per race. Oakdale and Kenwood is $1,199.11 a race. Race Type C includes marathons and those cost us $3,068.86. So we put the application fees at a standard $100. The late application fee, as I said, is three times as much. So you pay your $100 application fee for, let's say, Race B, nice in the middle. You're paying your $100 fee, application gets processed, we tell you you're approved, you need to pay your $500 permit fee before you can have your permit and have your event. So that just about covers the cost of Lakewood, but not, it's less than half of the Oakdale-Kenwood number. So we did try to look at these numbers. We thought 3,000 at this point for a marathon, we were, it seemed very unfeasible. So we went with $1,000 trying to recover at least a third of that. But there is an application late fee and it's significant. So that's just giving you some idea of the costs and how the stakeholder group and staff arrived at those numbers. What I will talk to you about next is kind of when this stuff comes in. These dates are pretty important. I talked a little bit about that application due date, application cutoff, and then that completeness confirmation, and then timeframe for decision. So no applicant should wonder, once they turn their stuff in, when will I hear from the city? These are fairly prescribed dates. But we have built in, if you want to play ball and apply on the, on the application due date that's prescribed here and not a late application due date, it gives plenty of time to really make your event the most successful it can be and allow city staff to work through those resources in a meaningful way. I will also mention, we are recommending the repeal of a couple sections of code. One of those in particular that are no longer necessary if we adopt the Special Event Ordinance is Parades and Processions, Article IV under Salina Municipal Code. That particularly talks about funeral processions. If you look in the 48th edition of the Standard Traffic Ordinance for Kansas Cities, adopted by the City of Salina 12-1-2021, there's an entire section dedicated to funeral procession, essentially driving behavior. Section 119 talks about parades and processions. It almost mirrors 38-101. In fact, section 19 of the Standard Traffic Ordinance is actually more comprehensive. And so it would make sense that that stay where it's at and that is what the standard we and PD would operate at to, rather than 38-101, which we're recommending repeal Let's see, Driving Duties or Duties of Drivers in a Procession, which is part of 38-103, one of the sections we're recommending repeal of. Section 10.1 Funeral Processions of the Standard Traffic Ordinance specifically breaks down everything from who's leading the procession, number of procession vehicles, where they have to be, what speed, far more detailed than what is currently in 38. And then last but not least, No Driver of a Vehicle, which is 38-104, should drive through a procession. Section 120 of the Standard Traffic Ordinance literally verbatim repeats that section. So everything that we're recommending repeal of is handled in the Standard Traffic Ordinance. We have also clarified in the Special Event Ordinance, kind of a couple of things that have been unclear for a number of years. One of that, one of those being block parties. Everybody loves them. That's, if you're a city worker, 4th of July means somebody wants a block party permit and how do we make that happen? They're both part of our community's legacy and they are cherished memory for some people and others not so much. What we have done here is we're treating them like a special event. You've got a number of people, you want streets closed, you want resources from us? Okay. But in addition, a couple of other things are necessary. So only a street classified by the city as a residential street may be utilized for a block party or other similar neighborhood events. You cannot take, you know, a primary collector road like Ohio and stop it for a block party. Like that's going to have impacts way beyond your potato salad and burgers. So we're not, that's one clear rule there. The city will provide a list of addresses to be affected by the proposed street closure. The applicant must submit a petition along with the application signed by two-thirds of the residents on both sides of the street. So we're saying, look, I'll get into GIS, I'm going to give you the list, go talk to your friends. You got to get these guys, at least two-thirds of them are girls, to sign off, meaning that your neighbors aren't going to spend the whole block party calling the city telling us they didn't know it was going to happen, they can't get out of their driveway, whatever. So the nice thing about also putting it into a permit like this is when the permits are complete, they go out to dispatch. They go out, so that means EMS has them, that means Police Department has them, so if, if an emergency happens, they kind of know where those blockages are in traffic. And streets may only be blocked for a period not exceeding 12 hours if you're having a block party. And if your past 12 hours, that is a serious block party. So we're in a different level of event. One of the other questions that has been out there for a long time is city-owned parking lots. We get that one a lot. Hey, I'm just, I want to have this huge event and I want to be in a city parking lot. Or I'm having something in the plaza and I want to reserve the parking lot for parking. Nope. But we, we've had these things outlined, but I think merging them with this so that when people are thinking about locations for their events, we're answering a lot of these parking lot questions ahead of time. We had a good conversation with SDI about this. In fact, the parking lots are now all in Civic Rec. So if you want to reserve a parking lot and looking at their availability, you can do that online through our Parks and Rec reservation site. And part of that process is what determines if you will or won't get that reservation. Events happening in city-owned parking lots between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, must be approved in writing by Salina Downtown, Inc. They can actually get into Civic Rec and also approve things in there, so that's also part of the advantage of doing it through Civic Rec. But that's prior to applying. So you need to go have a conversation with those folks down there and say, hey, I'm going to make a reservation of this spot. Are you guys okay if I'm doing it then? And that's through those kind of main business hours, which the businesses are most concerned about. Events happening in city-owned parking lots outside the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or any other time on Saturday or Sunday, do not require written approval by SDI prior to applying. Prior to applying. They can though, once that application goes out, if they see that raise concerns, and that may create additional conditions or something like that on the permit, just so that we're not having, you know, massive impacts on downtown and they're not aware. We have worked really hard to kind of pull all the reservation information into Civic Rec, so that'll also be a link that's kind of on that landing page. You want to apply digitally, you want to go through the manual digitally, you want to make your reservation digitally. I will say, and there's language that says in your reservation, just because you got a reservation does not guarantee a special event permit. It means you have a spot. But those are also some of the gates. When we talk about a process, you know, gates are where decisions are made. Those are some of those gates that we've designed in this process that before you apply, you have to have a location. If you're filling this thing out and you get to the location section and you don't have a reservation number, or if you're on private property, you, you don't have permission from that property owner, stop. Go get those things, then come back, because getting you into the queue, running these timelines, having you come up with money and stuff, and then not having a location is pointless for us and it's pointless for the applicant. So that's a big emphasis on the location. So with all that being said, you have two items before you. Item one is Ordinance 22-11141, which is approving Ordinance 22-11141. Or option two is to approve the ordinance with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate. Three is to postpone consideration to a specific date and time and provide staff, sorry, staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for their further consideration. Or four, approve the ordinance on first reading and provide additional direction before going to second reading. Or five, vote to deny the ordinance, resulting in the special event permit process staying as it is, which is pretty non-existent. Staff is recommending option one. And then also, we are recommending that Resolution 228099 be approved, which is option one, and that is establishing fees for the special event permit process pursuant to Chapter 6, Article V. But the commission, of course, could approve that resolution with amendments, postpone consideration on the resolution, and give staff further direction, or vote to deny the resolution. With that, I will happily stand for questions.
I'll start from the left, Commissioner Hoppe.
Not to be a naysayer, but I bet we're not done yet. I'm guessing there's, this will be a continually upgraded document. Does this give you flexibility if somebody does come in with an event that we haven't really seen happen, that you can still address it without any issues?
Well, first question is, do you need city services? Probably. How many people do you have? I mean, level five is over 1,000 people. So I mean, if somebody came in and said, hey, we want the second week of August and we want another Riverfest-type event, yeah, we've, we've got the flexibility in there.
And I guess it's fairly normal that a city does not cover the costs of these type of events through their fees. I'm just, I'm guessing that we're not alone in that.
No, it's pretty normal. I mean, there's a fine line of looking at it as an economic development benefit, of looking at it as kind of a cultural, kind of place-making investment on a community's part to cover some of those costs? Yes.
And is it fairly easy to find, it's going to be find the application stuff on the website?
Yeah.
That's, would be important if individuals can, to find that and know where to look, so.
After all this work?
Yeah, I was going to say, don't hide it, yeah. No, I appreciate all the work on this. It's, there's a lot there that I hadn't even thought about, so, so, thank you.
Commissioner Lankford?
No questions, just a comment, very thorough.
Thanks.
Commissioner Orion?
Yeah, wow, thank you. That's been a lot. Makes my head spin. Has it been beta-tested? I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've asked folks like Arts and Humanities to not approach as staff, but as approached as an applicant. We've asked them to share it with some other, you know, event holders that they know. And I'm very blessed to have Shandy Wick's work with my team and Shandy's pretty much done most of our major special events in the last 10-plus years. And so we pulled some of our trickier events over the last few years and kind of ran them through the system, tried to take the good parts that we've learned from and then fix the stuff that hadn't gone so well. So yeah, as beta-tested as it can be.
Okay. If everything keys off a location and I really don't care about location, I just want a downtown plaza, does that wind up, we give you a phone call and tell you, I can't get past this first thing, because, but I got all the other stuff?
I would tell you... I would tell you, you need to get on the Civic Rec and reserve your plaza.
Okay.
And it's, it's not to try and be difficult or not a customer service thing, but if you don't have that date reserved, it doesn't matter the conversation or the application I review, you don't have a place for the event. Like, so the, the logic there is why go to all that staff level and resource to approve something that possibly can't even happen because you don't have a reservation? So, and we tried to make the reservation as simple as possible. I mean, you could do it at three o'clock in the morning. On Civic Rec, it's got a calendar. Our plazas, we put a lot of effort into, and Parks was awesome in helping us do that, but you have an aerial picture of the plaza, denoting all the resources in the plaza, you have an aerial of the whole downtown and what other resources are down there. I mean, you have every piece of information you could need to decide if you wanna reserve that plaza. They've got a calendar and it shows you blacked-out or grayed-out dates, and then you just click on the date you want and you kind of fill out a reservation request form. It says when, where, who to contact, those types of things. The plazas, we don't even charge a full usage fee, we just charge a deposit. And you get that deposit back if you return it in one piece. So...
To, to follow up on Commissioner Ryan's comment or question, how does that work if I have a plaza reserved, and I think we had this happen one other time, and we have a rainout?
Mm-hmm.
How does that work if I wanna try to move it to the next week or the week after that?
We are not obligated to refund anything, but typically in something like that, we would try to move it as best as possible. But the honest goodness truth is, we can't be obligated to those things. And because you have a reservation, doesn't automatically guarantee that your event's gonna be proved. I mean, you could just rent that space and, I don't know, eat a sandwich there. You don't have to have a special event, so I'm not gonna deny your reservation. But if you, if you want to hold a certain type of event, you have to have the space and you have to have that permit. But, I mean, that's the other thing we've discovered. I mean, sometimes applicants just don't wanna listen. I mean, the event gets held, there's more people than they said that there would be, so we're sending more resources out there. Or the event becomes dangerous and needs to be canceled. There is a severe weather component to this too. I mean, we cannot help if a serious storm comes and we're not fiscally obligated to take that on if we have to cancel it because the county and their emergency weather folks are like, hey, it's not safe, you can't have that event anymore. So there are some of those sticking points in there. But our goal is always to work with an applicant as much as possible.
Right, Commissioner Lankford?
How much time and effort, hours went into creating all this?
Years.
Well, it's, it's kind of been like a slow-rolling snowball. And, but it's like a snowball that went through some mud, through some rocks, and there's a lot of stuff in there. And part of this effort was, we were already kind of there, but we just had to do it better. And, I mean, just if you look at those race and parade costs alone, each time those things are happening, we're not recouping that, and we're making it really hard on ourselves. So the idea was, if we just kind of went through this really hard exercise and asked ourselves, okay, let's stop doing this to ourselves and let's be more organized, more thoughtful, and more concise about this, so that the applicant knows what to do, we know how to process them better, and we can make the process better for everybody, it would be worth spending that energy upfront to have a greater longevity and to be able to do this better. So not only are we saving time and money, but we also have a better user experience.
If I could, I, I would add to that. This is certainly commendable that Lauren and her staff and those that assisted her got us to this point, because to say it was in the two hard piles is an understatement. The other time investment that's been going on for years is staffing through each one of these special events. And we kind of treat it like what we call our development review team, in that we identify the key resources for the city and try to do a thorough review. This helps organize it, but there's still gonna be a lot of that effort, event by event, as they come in, as we have to sit down and kind of work through not only just the deliverables, the, you know, the, the traffic barricades and those kind of things, but thinking through things that event organizers may not typically be used to thinking through. It's still gonna be a, quite an effort in terms of customer service, but...
And I guess that leads to my next question is user education. Is there a plan to get the word out that this is how we do things now?
Yes.
As kind of a self-service?
Yes. I mean, after the first of the year, I mean, that's, first of all, all of our major applicants who have major events who do this know that we're going down this road and have been a part of this. Also, some events that have happened this year and plan on happening again this coming year, we notified them when they applied this year and had conversations with them that we were moving in this direction. And like I said, this isn't drastically different than what we've ever done before, it's just better. I mean, the fees may, I mean, like a hundred dollars for a parade. If you're on time and you turn your stuff in, that, that's really not a crazy amount of money. It's, it's when we get into those late fees that, that things have a cost. So I don't think we're gonna have it be drastically different, but yes, we'll go through our user education. I mean, one of the things we've been talking about with kind of our online marketing folks is making some videos about tips on how to apply and spots where it can be most helpful. But that user manual, that's really kind of the best education, because these permits aren't the kind of permits you apply for day in and day out. Like, my contractors, right? I can do an annual education with them, 'cause they're gonna apply for, you know, twenty-nine building permits a year, or mechanical, or whatever. These you might apply for one at a time. So you have to have a resource that somebody can walk themselves through. And to Mike's point, we used to kind of handle these like DRT, and we'd have this meeting and you'd have all these people at the table. If you add up those hourly rates and a two-hour meeting like that, it's really expensive. The more complicated the event is, you're probably gonna have to have some of those pre-apps. But on some of those smaller events, ideally, I want you to be able to try and get yourself through the manual as much as possible, and that's probably gonna answer a lot of your questions. And so we're gonna get a more complete application from them, and we'll probably see some lessening of kind of that, for lack of better terms, kind of hand-holding on some of those smaller events, because the answers and the resources are a lot clearer. But we have good partners too, like SDI and Arts and Humanities who help educate too.
Is that manual available online now?
No, it's, the page is being built right now. It'll be live after the first of the year.
Okay, and that's my next question. Is there any status update on the website build?
Yeah, everything's on, on pace. We're just still working through, we've been meeting with all the departments and they're just working through the, the build, so it's a, it's, I don't have a timeline exactly, but everything is progressing, as expected.
But they're building us this on a separate platform. So even before the new website goes live, we'll have access to it, and it will be linked on our current website. So everything we're talking about is gonna be available after the first of the year.
That's good.
And then it will move into the new site, since it's already one of their products, once that new site goes live.
Okay. I guess my one concern with the fees, I didn't realize that there was never actual fees before, that there's gonna be a lot of pushback and people are gonna not be happy when they want their block party and they find it's gonna have to jump through all these hoops.
But then, on the other hand, they don't want somebody being irate that the streets close and come barreling through. I mean, there's a cost for everything.
True. Yeah, it'll be a work in progress, I'm sure.
Yeah, and I mean, some of it's deciding the cost of those things. If, if I did a cost analysis in every block party and we added up the number of block parties, is that something the city wants to cover as a cost?
And you, you mentioned all the costs, like to have a parade. Do you have a breakdown? I know a lot of people don't realize what all's entailed, but it's a lot. You know, how many street department people, how many officers, how many?
I think it's in the blue sheet.
So downtown parade route, just to give you an idea, Elm to Prescott, police department takes one supervisor at two and a half hours, and it costs sixty dollars an hour for a total of one hundred and fifty hours. Eleven officers at two and a half hours at thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents an hour for nine hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. Streets requires one supervisor at nine hours, one of the supply trucks at nine hours, maintenance worker two, two of those at nine hours, a one-ton pickup truck, one hour at six and a half hour, or I'm sorry, one of those at six and a half hours, a trailer at six and a half hours, a street sweeper times two, at two and a half hours. Those total costs, if you'd like, I can go down to their hourly breakdown. Plus type-one barricades, you need forty-nine type-one barricades, and you need all that stuff to drop them off. At a cost of two dollars a day is ninety-eight dollars. Plus, you need volunteers, those thankfully are free, you need at least sixteen of them when you try to do a parade and a race, at two and a half hours each, for a total of two thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, 'cause I, I know there's a lot to it, but I, just, just, when you go look at the parade, you don't see all that that goes into it, to prep.
Well, and, and like I said, we went with what's predictable. Those race routes, we know through practice and, and best practice, what's needed for them. So these were the easiest for us to actually start to create that true monetary impact and to understand those costs. And we had those conversations with the stakeholder group about fees. And I'll tell you that they were okay with fees. These aren't outrageous fees. They are enough to create a monetary relationship between the use of resources and the responsibility of holding the event. And really, if you do these things upfront and follow the rules, they're not terribly expensive. I mean, heck, renting a bouncy house is more than a hundred bucks. So you're gonna rent a plaza and get X amount of city resources, a hundred dollars is not unreasonable to go through that application process and then moving on from there, depending on the complexity of your event.
All right, any questions, comments from the public? All right, we have two actions, we'll take them separately. On, any action on ordinance twenty-two dash one 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 four one?
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number two-two one 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 four one, amending chapter six of the city code by establishing chapter six, adding an article to be numbered article five regarding the authorization and the regulation of special events, and repealing those related existing code sections previously required to regulate special events.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash one 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 four one on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries five zero. Any action on resolution twenty-two dash eight zero nine nine?
Mayor, I move we approve resolution, resolution number twenty-two eight oh nine nine, establishing fees for special event permits pursuant to chapter six, article five.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number twenty-two dash eight zero nine nine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries five nothing. Thank you for three years of work, four years of work. We will now move to seven point four.
Item seven point four, approve ordinance number two-two dash one 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 four zero on first reading, amending Salina Code sections six dash one one five, six dash one one six, six dash one eight six, six dash one eight eight, six dash two three three, and six dash two three four pertaining to the permitting and regulation of horse-drawn vehicles, outdoor merchandise areas, and minor sidewalk dining areas in the downtown arts, commerce, and entertainment district in the city of Salina, Kansas, repealing the existing sections and repealing Salina Code section thirty-five dash forty point two pertaining to the use of public sidewalk in the C-four central business district for placement of certain objects.
Back again?
Yes. As I mentioned my earlier staff report, Commissioners Mayor, we have been working on a series of regulations to kind of enliven downtown. A big part of that and the start of that was the ACE District Regulations, and that stands for Arts, Commerce, and Entertainment District. So the city commission adopted ordinance two-two dash one 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 four on June sixth of twenty-twenty-two and created the ACE District. Since that time, staff has been working with downtown merchants and other users of these new regulations in the implementation phase. And as Commissioner Hoppeck put it earlier, it's never really quite over. We learned a few things in the implementation phase that we would like to amend in the ordinance since its adoption. Primarily, our recommendations are related to horse and carriage providers and to the outdoor merchandise areas. Most notably, the horse and carriage, after speaking with horse and carriage drawn vehicle providers and the Kansas Department of Agriculture, Division of Animal Health, I didn't know this, but they have equine epidemiologists. We learned information about veterinarian records and particularly immunization, that we would recommend amendments to the code to lessen those requirements. Basically, there is no mandatory vaccine requirement in the state of Kansas for horses. If horses travel across state borders and do particular types of shows, a veterinarian may recommend certain types of vaccines or require them, particularly for out-of-state travel. But in general, if you're not doing that, those would not be required. We also further clarified information regarding the health certificate required, who would issue that, when we would get that, and how old that certificate needed to be. It could be within the last thirty days from the date of application. We also identified just a couple areas of duplication in that submittal process. One of them was related to annual renewal, and if they had, well, there's really no reason for them to answer that. We can see that in our system when they submitted. So there's some of those things that we could answer those questions ourselves. So we are making those recommendations, and those are not only identified in the table that was attached, but have been outlined in the blue sheet. The other one was the outdoor merchandise area. We had really great ambitions of having these site plans that the applicants or typically the businesses would submit, and what we learned is that was probably maybe too ambitious, and it's actually our right of way. It's probably just easier for us to make them. And that was when things got a little bit more successful, because we already have the aerials, we have the drawings, we have the measurements. And it's, it has really nothing to do with them and their business. It has to do with like, where are the parameters to either side of the building, where's the infrastructure that's in the sidewalk? And that site plan doesn't take away their responsibility that once they start setting stuff out there, that they don't have to keep a clear path to travel and all those kind of operational requirements. It just says, here, you need the site plan to understand where your boundaries are at. And we just found it was easier if we made those boundaries. And from an obligation point of view, it's, it's actually our right of way. So we can draw those boundaries, since it's ours. So that was kind of the big piece there. The other one is, and this is kind of a floating section of code that I've been trying to kind of figure out how to either bring into special events or into downtown, which is section thirty-five dash forty dot two, the use of public sidewalks in C-four central business district for the placement of movable, movable flowerpots, planters, bicycle racks, and business hours-only placement of movable signs and outdoor furniture. We can handle a lot of that now in the outdoor merchandise areas. So Dean and I, along with conversations with SDI folks, kind of went through and found the more relevant sections of all of that and have moved those into the outdoor merchandise area regulations. So if you have a permitted outdoor merchandise area, you can have plants or planters, you can have the movable furniture, you can have the outdoor business hour-only signs. Those types of things are described in there, so you don't have to have this whole separate set of code anymore. All of it's kind of tucked in there and under that one permit. So those are really the, the main pieces that we are recommending from the amendment So with that, staff is recommending option one, which is, of course, adoption of ordinance two-two dash one 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 four zero. But as a second option, you can approve the ordinance with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate, postpone consideration of the ordinance to a date specified and time, and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for its further consideration. Or four, approve the ordinance on first reading and provide direction regarding information and amendments prior to second reading. Or five, vote to deny the ordinance, resulting in chapter six, section IV being unamended and continued operational and administrative challenges due to code language.
Any questions?
Actually, I have another question. I was just kind of curious, as far as the, the outdoor merchandise areas, have you had any friction as far as, like, let's say you own a boutique or something that sells clothing, and you have like a little pop-up thing that's selling clothing, which is essentially competing with the downtown business? Do we look at locations, or is it possible that they might camp right in front of a boutique? Or, I mean, not to paint that a difficult scenario, but I could kind of see that stuff popping up.
Yeah, so those things are outlined in code. So if you take it solely from being a, like a mobile merchant cart provider, there are rules on like how far away from a front entry door you can be, how far away from an outdoor dining area you can be and things like that. So even without an outdoor merchandise area, you have rules in kind of where you can end up on the sidewalk. The second piece to that is if you're an The second piece to that is if you're an outdoor merchandise area, you could invite one of those mobile merchants into your area under your permit and share that space. Um, the other option is to, if you do have an outdoor merchandise area, it specifically says distance from that area as well. So you kind of have protections from your front door distance if you don't have the permit for an outdoor merchandise area, and then if you do, there's kind of an additional distance requirement.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it helps. Thank you.
Yep.
So if I could, I want to offer one clarification, and I realize it's gonna complicate or confuse the, the conversation, but as Ms. Driscoll's explaining, it's our right of way, we can own it, we can regulate it, I can hear in the back of my head, mind, the conversation we've been having about right of way as a free speech forum. And I don't, I don't want to get into all that, but, but to say, everything that we're talking about here are commercial activities, and so our, we have much more ability to regulate commercial activities in our rights of way. As we deal with free speech activities in the rights of way, very different in terms of having to be hands-off. And so, you know, the issue that's come up recently is what feels like a booth or a vendor in a right of way, but they are adept enough at making that a free will contribution for their items to avoid being a commercial activity and ge- uh, getting themselves the benefit of a free speech for, format. Don't want to bog down in it, but I know there are, and there may be people watching that have had this whole other conversation where we've said our hands are tied about regulating rights of way. They are, as it relates to free speech activities. They are not, as it relates to commercial activity.
And those site plans are really about the placement of things within the right of way, which, under code, in fact, one of the repealed sections in here is placement of things in the right of way. Those flowerpots and movable furniture and things like that are all in the right of way. And the new ordinance as adopted specifically addresses what City Manager Shkreng is talking about, particularly when it comes to free speech for busking, where they're allowed to be and whether they're selling merchandise versus making merchandise available for donations. That's all covered within there.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments from the public? All right, bring it back to the commission for action.
Here, Davis, I move we approve ordinance number two-two dash one-one-one-four-zero and amend Salina code sections six dash one-one-five, six dash one-one-six, six dash one-one-eight-six, six dash one-eight-eight, six dash two-three-three, and six dash two-three-four pertaining to and permitting and regulation of horse-drawn vehicles, outdoor merchandise areas, and minor sidewalk dining areas in the downtown arts, commerce, and entertainment district in the city of Salina, Kansas, repealing the existing sections and repealing Salina code section three-five dash four-zero dot two pertaining to the use of public sidewalk in the C-four central business district for placement of certain objects.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash one-one-four-zero on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-nothing, and we'll come back for a second reading next week. We will move now to seven point five.
Item, excuse me, item seven point five, approve resolution number two-two dash eight-one-zero-zero, authorizing the submission of an application by the city of Salina to the Kansas Department of Commerce for the issuance of a non-competitive subaward for the city to administer the economic expansion rural housing grants, authorizing the reservation of funds by the city necessary to meet the required match for the first dis- dispersment of grant funds, and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant award agreement and to take any actions necessary regarding distribution of grant funds and administration of the grant award agreement.
I think for three agenda admins, you're gonna have the most number of words, uh, in total of anyone here.
Okay, well, this is also another piece within a very long journey. As many of you are aware, since 2016, the city has been successful, along with many of its employer partners and business partners, in becoming an expansion location for several economic development prospects. As part of that, we have been diligently working to address housing availability for that future workforce associated with those economic development prospects. Uh, since 2021 specifically through to today, city staff has worked continually to engage with interested developers from various housing projects across product types and price points in accordance with recommendations of the list's line of housing assessment and strategic plan. We originally adopted our plan in 2016, did a 2021 update, and then additional 2022 update for fresh numbers to stay on top of this topic. Uh, as a part of talking to several different developers, most notably, we've been working with or had worked with the Driever Partner Group. That work began with them getting to know Salina and the community in June of 2021, meeting with major employers, uh, the city and county commission, and other key community stakeholders before any state or federal funding became available. Later in 2021, and as we were kind of in the midst of the COVID crisis, Department of Commerce, with the use of American Rescue Plan funds, announced two new grant programs designed to encourage a stronger Kansas economy. These two grant programs were Spark and Base, and we were able to submit for those in 2022. Spark was kind of interesting. Um, the application itself was actually a recommended memo of need and ideas. Um, it was a much bigger process and had a lot of varying application, but we did testify on behalf of that grant as the program was getting developed, um, but a little different than your traditional grant application. The Base application was more, uh, typical in it was meant for economic development infrastructure creation and identified that housing could be a part of that, so we did submit for the Base application and, you know, it was that multi-question, multi-page attachment kind of traditional grant application process. Uh, as part of that, both Spark and Base, the city commission met in a special meeting in February twenty-twenty, or, sorry, February twenty-third of 2022, where you gave staff authorization to apply for Base grant. We didn't need authorization to apply for Spark, because we were just submitting a memo of ideas, which basically mirrored what we had in our Base grant applications. Um, unfortunately, we were not approved for either of these grants, but funding was awarded to the city, an allocation of 25 million in funds from HB twenty-five-ten titled appropriations for FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three, and FY twenty-four for various state agencies, 2022 omnibus bill, authorizing certain transfers and capital improvement projects, and from SB two-sixty-seven titled House Substitute for Substitute, SB two-sixty-seven by committee on appropriations, appropriations for FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven for various state agencies through the appropriations committees. The city received notice on August eighteenth, 2022, that the appropriations had been designated by the governor's office to be administered by the Kansas Department of Commerce. So, once we received that notice, the question then became how to move forward and get housing built. Typically, for us, that is accomplished through a development agreement, and that is a requirement. Uh, the developer was originally proposing 500 units of workforce rental housing between two locations within Salina. The city was pur- was pursuing a sole-source approach with the developer due to the developer's original involvement prior to any state award, as well as their unique property control. It was anticipated that a draft development agreement would then be shared with Department of Commerce. However, on November fourteenth, 2022, Kansas Department of Commerce advised that a full RFP or Request for Proposal process was preferred for the identification of a developer, rather than a sole-source approach being taken by the city thus far. At the same time, Department of Commerce also requested that a number of administrative materials be submitted, and they provide a non-competitive grant application to be submitted in order to award the 25 million to the city of Salina. The current request in front of you today is to give us that permission to apply for our already awarded 25 million through the Kansas Department of Commerce's application. Uh, I think it's relevant to note, the fiscal note for this particular request, that the 25 million state funding is contingent on a one-for-one matching funds provided by other sources, which can include funds provided by developers, subject to the terms of a negotiated development agreement entered into the city, entered in with the city of Salina. The total estimated cost of housing that satisfies the goal of 500 multifamily units exceeds a hundred million dollars. The provisions, the FY twenty-three Economic Expansion Rural Housing Grant, which is the name that Commerce has given this 25 million, specify that KDC will provide 25 million to the city of Salina to be distributed via this program for eligible profit and nonprofit developers, contractors with an organizational mission to develop affordable housing and scalable shovel-ready projects to develop homeownership and rental units with a construction timeline showing completion of all units prior to June thirtieth, 2026. First payments will be made in advance upon receipt with the executed award agreement and confirmation of a proportional matching fund. The first distribution or dispersment of funds will be 20% of the allotment. After that, 20% of the total required match is documented and committed. The attached resolution authorizes city manager to receive city funds in the amount of 5 million in order to demonstrate the commitment of the 5 million and satisfy the requirements necessary to initiate the first distribution of mandatory grant funds. The resolution further provides that the reservation of funds is made in anticipation of a replacement of the city's reserved funds by a qualified developer or contractor selected to complete projects under this grant program and subject to the provisions of the negotiated development agreement. I figure for everybody at home, if you haven't read this, those were some pretty key details, so try not to read verbatim usually, but this one's kind of particular. Um, staff has identified the following options for the city commission's consideration. Approve resolution two-two dash wa- eight-one-zero-zero, or you could approve resolution two-two-eight-one-zero-zero with amendments to the city commission deems appropriate, or three, postpone consideration to specify date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information amendments the city commission would like to request for further consideration, or four, vote to deny the resolution resulting in us missing the deadline to submit these documents to the Department of Commerce, which is the sixteenth of this month. Staff recommends option one.
Go further and say of this week. Any questions for Ms. Driscoll? And here. Any questions from the public, comments?
John Blanchard, city of Salina. Um, boy, I don't know where to start on this one, but it has been a long road. There's been considerable effort put into this. Um, eighteen months is a long time to work on a sole-source project with a developer that has a unique property ownership position. I don't know exactly what that means, but I don't know if that means he has a option to purchase the property or what he did. But on November fourteenth, we were told after probably, what, eight executive sessions that, wow, we would prefer an RFP process? Is it, is the application process for a 25 million dollar grant from the state, does that ever come without any strings? Um, I think the cart was way out in front of the horse. I think you guys fell for dog and pony show from a, from a, uh, San Francisco developer that I think, um, perhaps had the chops back in the day to do his projects in San Francisco and elsewhere, but I think he found some unsophisticated folks that he thought he might be able to get by on. That's unfortunate. The two of you ran your campaigns based on all this housing you're bringing to Salina. Well, not only did this property not go anywhere in a year and a half, we're back to the starting point, but the Menards one fell apart too. So, well done. I can't believe that we have employers that are out there that are saying to everyone that housing is their biggest concern, and we continue to screw up time and time again. The fact that they're not in here complaining about it tells me that they're either intimidated by you guys, or that we really don't have a housing crisis and that Kubota and Schwanz is gonna do just fine with their automated factories. So, and then the other thing is, is the one project that you did manage to give away 25 years of tax abatement on was Southview Estates out there. You guys went to the ribbon cutting, the rest of the community has seen it online and driven by it. That's a joke. Anybody that would buy a house for 200,000 or 185 or whatever they are out there, one bedroom or three bedrooms, one car garage, slab on grade. Now, I know Marty Schuchert put together that housing study, but I can tell you this. When we looked at the update on the 24th of October, the pictures in there didn't look anything like the ones out there. And the second thing is, is I don't think you should throw Marty Schuchert under the minibus, because I'm sure that when he made recommendations about what we needed, that was not what he had in mind. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, no one online. Any action to be taken by the commission?
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number twenty-two eighty-one-hundred.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number twenty-two dash eight-one-zero-zero. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-nothing. Seven point six.
Item seven point six, housing request for proposal process overview discussion.
Say, Minister.
That would be me. This is a companion item to the item that you just considered, um, kind of builds on the, the background that Ms. Driscoll provided, and it does relate to the Economic Expansion Rural Housing Grant, um, from, from the state of Kansas. Uh, touching on the background just a little bit, um, there was an extended amount of time that we were in conversations with, with developers and Driever in particular. A lot of that conversation started out as if, um, it was a more typical project or or more developer-driven. Um, they were pursuing financing from local investors as well as, as financial institutions, um, and then transitioned to state funding, and there was quite a bit of conversation from the time of the state award, um, until November fourteenth about whether it would be acceptable to transition to a sole-source approach. As you know, um, Mr. Driever addressed you in a couple, uh, open sessions and offered, pro-offered, uh, so, uh, syndicating to another developer that we were in conversations with. Um, the original expectation was that that decision would be forthcoming from Commerce as we finalized the development agreement and, and project details towards the end of the year. They, um, had provided some feedback in advance of that, as Ms. Driscoll mentioned, um, in the middle of November, indicating, uh, they were requesting an RFP. Um, I think Ms. Driscoll mentioned that they provided application information at that time. We'd had quite a bit of conversation, but, um, the, the actual specifics of the application that you just approved, um, were provided to us in, in mid-November. So proceeding on the, the RFP approach, we've involved, um, Matt Webster, who's on the line, um, with our financial advisor, Stifel Nicholas. He was involved with the, uh, financial due diligence process as we were proceeding down the sole-source path, and he's been heavily involved with the, um, the RFP preparation process. That's something that he's, has experience in, um, through his work with Stifel and with other communities that have solicited proposals for housing developments. Um, in, in my staff report, I, I described to you kind of our typical process of, of developing an RFP and conducting that process, uh, making it known that we're requesting proposals, receiving those, scoring those, uh, con- uh, identifying a shortlist, conducting interviews, and then ultimately making a recommendation for the city commission's consideration. This process would be very similar to that. Um, I noted in, in my staff report that I've not atta- that we're in near final draft form. We still have some, some details and, and wording to finalize, but we're in near final draft form. I did not attach the entirety of the RFP. I didn't want to sound that starting gun for the development community to, to prepare RFPs in advance of it truly being out, uh, for response, but I did provide you with, uh, excerpts from it, and, uh, first of that being the RFP introduction itself. I won't read it to you, but it, it goes into, uh, some background information about our community, our, our economic development success, our housing need, and, uh, what it is we're soliciting proposals for. I would note that, um, we had a conversation about would we entertain a proposal from a developer of less than 500 units? Uh, we, in, in the RFP, indicated willingness to, uh, consider proposals of 250 units, thinking that, uh, you could put two of those together to accomplish the 500 goal. If we had some other lesser number, we may end up with, with proposals, um, less than, than two-fifty, and we may not be able to put together multiple proposals to hit the five hundred target. So we are trying to keep our options open in terms of considering proposals from developers that, that may not be up for tackling in a five-hundred unit project, and, and that's all going to have to be part of the, the review of the proposals when they're received. We also identified development goals as, as being the keys that the initiative should include, developing high-quality housing with sufficient quality and quantity, providing rents that are supportable in this lineup market. As you know, that's been an ongoing conversation about construction costs and, and the ultimate rent rates that could be anticipated, adding new assets that will serve Salina's housing need, developing sites which add value to the surrounding neighborhoods. We specifically called out that special assessment and RHID financing would not be available in, in these scenarios, in part, the thinking being there that formation of a district and/or inclusion of other properties, especially in a special assessment scenario, when you might have a improvement, whether that's water, sewer, or street, that may run down a street as an example, and the development's on one side, you have to form a district that extends to the entire benefit area, and now you start to involve additional properties and, and additional variables. Available funds, we identified the, the grant from the state of twenty-five million. You previously identified a million dollars for, for housing. The counties indicated willingness to consider some, using some of their ARPA funds if it meets low to moderate income requirements in terms of its location. We previously talked about industrial revenue bonds for up to ten years, and that afford, could afford them sales tax exemption on construction materials, as well as property tax exemption. The specific of those incentives would have to be negotiated as part of the development agreement, ultimately approved by you as the governing body, and they would have to be demonstrated to accomplish, it'd be necessary to accomplish the goals. So there'd be, before all is said and done, they'll be expected to provide a performa and, and financial numbers that we can then scrutinize, development fees, management fees, return on investment, basically get a good understanding of the math of the cost of construction, and then the resulting rent rates. There is a language in there about ethics and ex parte communications, just forewarning them that they need to respond to the RFP, if they have any questions or to submit them. We then will post the question and the answers, much like an addendum that we're committing to all the parties that might be interested on a designated location on our website. There's a punch list there of, of submittal requirements that, as part of that initial submittal, and this is anticipated to be a two-part process where we have that initial proposal, we shortlist, we conduct the interviews, we enter into negotiations, and, and at that point, we can do a higher level of scrutiny of financial information that may be proprietary, and also then get into the due diligence process. There's also a provision that, you know, no obligation to reach a, an agreement with the identified party. If things don't work out, we can transition to another selected respondent, and there's no obligation to enter into an agreement at all if we're not successful in, in identifying a, a respondent and being able to put a project together. As far as the review and selection process, I've provided you the bullet, bullet points there, but suffice it to say that there'll be an evaluation committee, much like any of the other RFPs that we conduct, there'll be an evaluation committee. The intended members of that are myself, deputy city manager, assistant city manager, finance director, Lauren Driscoll, and Matt Webster, to do that initial review and scoring, and identify the shortlist, and conduct the interviews, and then report out to you a recommendation. In part, that is, is very much in keeping with our other processes, but it's also to not create a dual role if there were, there's a delegation of authority from the governing body, and, and we're administering it rather than possibly creating this as an open meeting type interview setup, or creating any conflicts of responsibilities at that level versus the governing body's review and approval level. In terms of due diligence, we call out that the, the proposer is going to be required to present a detailed project proposal after consult, consultation with the city, and we point out that there will be financial due diligence review of the preferred proposer, and they will have to provide detailed financial information and go through a detailed review. And as part of the negotiation process, they're expected to provide any additional requested documentation that, that the city may request. Conducting the RFP process in and of itself, there's no direct fiscal impact. There'll be some expenses associated with staff time and, and consulting fees, but there's no noticeable fiscal impact. Obviously, the fiscal impact comes when we identify a, a successful respondent, and we enter into negotiations and, and hopefully implement the agreed-upon approach with the very, the, the funds that ultimately get negotiated, whether that's IRBs and, and ARPA funds and those type of things. Other than that, as you well know, we've been having conversation for quite some time struggling with, you know, cost estimates and, and construction costs and rent rates, but I, I do feel that with Mr. Webster's assistance, we have a good overview of the information we need, a good means to analyze that and create a comparison between respondents. This proposal puts the burden on them to identify locations and provide information about the status of their, whether they own it, have it optioned, have it under contract, what their intent is to secure the properties. That'll be part of the review and consideration, that'll be part of the interview process, and then ultimately it'll have to be part of the development agreement to ensure that they have sufficient property control to complete their project. The Menards project stopped short of that, and we, we really weren't involved to the level that we are in, in this project. We were involved with planning and zoning, and we were involved with a consideration of industrial revenue bonds, but that's an example of a, a pretty unique arrangement between the property owner and Menards, and, and they didn't have, those details worked out, and called it to our attention when they became aware that they did not have a meeting of the minds with the Menards. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Just one informational, could you speak to the independence of our receiving the funds from the Economic Expansion Rural Housing Grant and the tentative timeline for the RFP process?
So part, part of the reason that we took the step that we did in the prior action was to solidify our position with the state, both in terms of submitting the application, entering into a funding agreement, and the conversations we had with the Department of Commerce were that as soon as we could demonstrate the availability of funds, they would make that first distribution. That is a way to kind of indicate that the project's moving from the state funding perspective. The resolution that you just passed acknowledges the reservation of city funds for that purpose, but then one of the key components of the development agreement would be confirmation that the developer is putting up twenty-five million dollars of funds to satisfy that one-for-one match in the end. And in part, that's why the prior staff report noted that the project costs that have generally been estimated for a project this size are a hundred million or more. So if we go forward with this project at this scope, there's every reason to believe the developers are going to be putting in sufficient funds to satisfy that requirement in the end. Our, our pledge or our reservation of funds is a way to get that first distribution expedited, just to kind of solidify our position with the state and, and the funding arrangements with the state are in motion, and remove some doubt, possibly at the state legislation, legislature level.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Hoppick.
Yeah, the, the more I was thinking about this, this, this afternoon, as I was rereading this, and I understand the, the reason for the two, two-hundred-and-fifty units, but are we, by, by putting that stipulation in there, in the RFP, are we potentially removing some developers from the RFP and, and also removing certain parcels of ground? I guess, what was the number of apartments that was to go in on the Menards property? Do you remember? It was less than two-fifty, wasn't it?
Two-twenty-five? I'm, I'm looking to Lauren or...
It was less than two-hundred, that's what I was thinking. So I guess I'm going back with, with the Menards property, even if someone had control of that, would it even be large enough to do a two-hundred-and-fifty apartment?
Part of staff's conversation was, you know, does, does that add another story? Does, would a project have to go up to meet the number? And as I mentioned, our rationale really was trying not to end up with a hodgepodge of smaller projects that we may not be able to put together a mixture that accomplishes the five hundred. But we, we debated that two, two-twenty-five, two-fifty range, but the other, the other aspect of it is just the complexity of administering an award to multiple developers. Instead of two, you may be talking three, four, or even five.
Yeah, and I agree, I don't think we want to get down to fifty or a hundred, you know, and have them spread all out from an administrative standpoint, but I, I do have a concern, what do we currently have in town that would fall into that two-hundred-and-fifty unit complex? Would Chapel Ridge be the only one we have? Would it be two-fifty?
Yeah, I believe so.
And probably the, the, the properties over there off of Magnolia in Ohio, what would that be?
The reserves at Prairie Glen? Yeah, I don't think they rise to that level.
Yeah. So I, I just, I, I see us limiting ourselves perhaps to, to investors to come in and, and make that investment at, at that size, so I don't know. I, I don't have an answer, but it's, it is a concern that we may not even, I don't know if you even get an RFP, because you've got to get somebody that lines up with the ground and, and that, that matches with a two-hundred-and-fifty unit.
And Mr. Webster's on the line. One technique on RFPs, on things like that, is to turn that requirement into a preference, and at that point, you're indicating that is your preference, but you're not ma, you know, absolutely ruling out alternatives. Matt, I'm going to put you on the spot a bit.
I'm here.
And any feedback on a numeric preference versus a stated minimum?
So I, I think we could go either way, and, and what I would say is, it really is a matter of efficiency in picking a lower limit. So, so whether it's two-hundred or two-hundred-and-fifty, or, or some other number in that range, I, I think, I think we could, the city could be flexible on that. As the city manager said, we, we don't want to have is a negotiation with five different parties, you know, trying to add up to, to the five-hundred unit preference, which, which I think would be an unworkable situation if, if we got to a large number of developers.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd prefer the wording of preference or something like that, a goal of, or I don't know how you word that, but I, I guess maybe if you're dealing with three developers instead of two, would that be workable? But I think I just, I'm concerned about, without going out and knowing how many acres you need to do the two-fifty, and again, we say, well, we ask somebody to go three-story. Well, we may have developers that are not used to going three stories, they're used to doing two stories, so.
And admittedly, we are trying to bring a different product to our market, and, and in part solve a problem that we've yet to be able to solve. So some of the interest that, that we're seeing, that we're optimistic about is people that are experienced in that range. But until we conduct the RFP process, I don't know what to expect in terms of ultimate interest to the point of submitting a proposal.
And I would just add parenthetically, the, the most new products, so apartments typically follow sort of a template that, that gets used in a, in a particular region of the United States, and, and most of what we're seeing is three or four stories. So, so you don't really see that much two-story construction anymore. So, so that might solve the problem, but, but I think, I think your concern is, is valid, and, and we can certainly address it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Longby.
I do think one thing to consider is if there's more than two projects, you're going to have maybe a wider array of, of product or variation that would appeal to a broader client base or tenant base. I mean, I think that we start looking at the scale of, of two-fifty and the number of units, and that's another Chapel Ridge. It, to me, that kind of concretes the idea that there's a very finite number of places you can do a project of that scale, where maybe smaller projects, you're going to have a little bit more flexibility in terms of location, and, and again, product.
Another way to look at it.
I did have one more thing I had written over here, and I guess, and again, when you're doing an RFP and you're not just dealing with one developer, which would be much easier, how do, how are we addressing the breakdown of three, two, one-bedroom efficiency apartments also? How does?
I think the first pass, we're going to look at what they propose and, and the mixture of, of kind of the higher-rated respondents, but ultimately, if, if we end up with multiple respondents that we're entertaining, then we're going to have to enter into some targeted negotiations about, here's what we're trying to accomplish, here's what you proposed, here's what's in play, and, you know, the expectation, on my part of the developer is going to be there, there's going to have to be some flexibility there, recognizing that we had an ultimate goal, and they submitted a partial, you know, a, a component of that, but they didn't respond with one proposal that's fully responsive to what we're trying to accomplish.
I know, it's like, that's, that's kind of the uniqueness of this. It's not, it's not the average RFP you would go out and do, so anyway.
I, I certainly can't speak for developers, but there, the ones that we've had conversations with, there seems to be a recognition of the need that we've identified what we're trying to accomplish, and, and then it's collaborative conversation, where this RFP process will certainly formalize it, it will give us detail about, you know, their assumptions and in terms of fees and rates of return, so that we can vet them preliminarily as, as being an effective use of the funds, and then we, we're going to have to negotiate.
And there may be cost efficiencies in doing a three-story. I know if you go to, to Kansas City, a majority of their new, new build apartments are three-story, and same way with Wichita probably, so we've just not seen that here, so maybe that does take, take away some of the concern I have with the, the amount of acreage required to, to put something in like that, so I guess we'll see what we get.
We, we spent a lot of time speculating about what kind of responses we might get, and what, you know, what locations might be in play, but until we get this out the door, it's, it's just hard to say.
Commissioner Ryan? Nothing here. Commissioner Longby?
I think we need to let the free market be free in this, and that these developers and investors likely know a lot more what's going to work and what's not. I don't want to lock in locations, say you've got to build here. It'd be nice to point out, hey, we got build-ready ground here, we'd like it here, but I think we've got to be flexible. Is there a timeline of having this out the door?
Yeah, in the next week or two, and if I could back up to your, your other point, location-wise, the only thing that we're indicating is low to moderate income census tracts have some opportunity for the county's funds. Beyond that, we, it is very open-ended in terms of the developers proposing a location. The intended timeline, we, we've got some details to work out in terms of how we describe the confidentiality of submittals, or the lack of confidentiality of submittals, and how we're going to handle that, and some finishing touches to put on it, but I think either end of this week or end of next week, hopefully, we can have it out. We, we're looking at a forty-five day response time, trying to take into account the holidays there and, and give a reasonable amount of time to respond, and then kind of thirty-day increments in terms of interviewing, or shortlisting and interviewing and getting a recommendation to the governing body for that initial consideration. At that point, there's going to be a lot more conversation to be had as we try to negotiate a development agreement.
What's the deadline for us to use the twenty-five million?
Twenty-two-six.
Twenty-two-six, okay.
Obviously, there's more sense of urgency than, than that.
Right, but that is our, that is our, I couldn't remember what that exact date was. It seemed like there was one other thing that went along with it.
From my knowledge, when this RFP goes out, what kind of channels does it go out in? How do we get this distributed?
We have a known group of interested parties, Mr. Webster does as well, and then we're going to try to get it out through design communities, but I, Matt, do, do you want to speak to how you've seen that done previously?
Yeah, yeah, so, so generally, there would be a limited pool of, of qualified developers within the city, and I think Lauren probably knows who those folks are, and then we would look also to Wichita and the, and Kansas City, and then talk to, to probably architects and kind And then talk to, to probably architects and contractors to, to see whether they had some others or they might want to send it to. But it, but it's, you know, it's obviously a public document. So the more we can spread the word, I think the wider the constellation of, of possible interest is. But I, I expect that probably most of the interest will come from either in and around Salina or Wichita or Kansas City.
And we've been trying to inventory the developers that we're aware of that have done projects.
And I, and I, one other thing, I guess, for the public, the reason we keep talking about 500 units is 500 units is the number that we told the state of Kansas we were going to build in order to get the 25 million, correct?
Correct. And that, as the state communicated, it, it's in response to 500 jobs, not necessarily 500 units, but we are treating that as 500 units being the target that we're trying to hit.
Any questions, comments from the public?
Norman Mansfield, they're stopping development all over the U.S. Yes, they are. They're buying up this land to stop this development. I've got a lot of pictures here, so I'm not going to show you. I'll show you one. This is what you want to ruin? You ruin it here in Salina, Kansas, too, in the state of Kansas. This land is being bought up to keep it from being developed. We're going to have problems with wildlife coming to town. I can show you pictures. Wildlife is being, being introduced. They're getting used to humans. Now we're going to kill them. And this is what you want. So I would say eliminate the developers from the first place. You can lower your costs. We need to stop this. It's about our future generations.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. And Matt. Mr. Webster. Lettering's little there, but thank you for being part of this. As far as RFPs go, you know, we, we had a lot of discussion here. I could tell you I've had 30 years of experience in the real estate development business. The most significant portion of that was working as a land planner and with real estate development companies in Park City and Salt Lake City, Utah. I can tell you, one of the best ways to get the word out is get it to your multi-disciplinary engineering firms. They're going to have contacts with developers that they've done work with in the past. I could tell you, one of the hiccups you're going to run into here is the fact that you're asking for some very specialized stuff, like 200 of this and 500 of that, rather than letting them do their own due diligence and kind of take that as a recommendation. And I'm hoping that that will be a recommendation. But I think you're really, in the private sector, it's easy for Breckenridge Ski Resort to come and say, we want to do, we, we want an RFP because they own all the property. So everyone's dealing with the same thing. So every firm that's going out there and getting their developers and investors involved know that they can do due diligence on a particular piece of property, what impact it's going to have on the community, what's the likelihood for success, all the different things that is very relevant to the success of that particular project. And 500 units in one part of this town versus 500 in another part of the town is going to have a completely different outcome. I think we're going to really be struggling to find the larger investors and developers. And I think that we should look at splitting it into some more digestible pieces. The reason being that I think we have a lot of folks in this town, probably two or three groups we could put together with the development syndicate, put together private placement memorandum, get them to do due diligence with local engineers and architects, and we could do some projects here. I'd love to see the downtown Tiff residential project be something that's funded through some of this money. We need residents downtown. But, you know, about eight years ago, I suggested an RFP process with about five or six different projects uniquely identified. It was called the Developer Showcase. I'll send you all another copy of that. I sent it to you back in 2018. Commissioner Hoppick, in 2018, you had said you would prefer to see a request for proposal process. I sent an email to you guys and said, I agree with Commissioner Hoppick. I think that's the approach we need to take. It's going to get us to where we want to be quicker. We could have identified properties. We could have worked with the landowners on that prior to submitting the request for proposals. So we didn't get into a situation where now the developers, if, Mayor, if you'd allow me to kind of finish this thought.
Quickly.
The problem, the concern I have with an RFP process is that we're already so far down the road here. 2026 is like that. And first of all, I have no idea where you're going to get contractors to build all those. But what you're going to do is if you bring one guy in to build 500 units, you're going to put every single builder in this community out of business. Because all those, they're going to be able to pay them more. And all your local contractors and developers are going to lose all their specialty guys because they're going to get paid more. So I would say that we've wasted a lot of time, but let's make sure when we get this RFP put together, that it's going to be something that not just one group says, hey, this looks like it's tailor-made for me. And I'm hoping it's not tailor-made for just one group. And I hope that some of our local folks that can easily assemble a team have at least an opportunity to get part of that state funding. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Ken Ritz from Salina. Going back decades, I noticed how housing developed in Salina and ended up purchasing a condo in an area that I always admired. There were several areas like that. The Old Hill is a masterpiece. There's nothing to match the Old Hill development. And in, in terms of variety as well, there are little two-bedroom houses there, up to rather statuesque, large holdings. What Presley did, starting in the early 1970s, stood out to me as it developed. And when I came back to Salina, it just, there was just something different about that. And I, it ranges from a single-family, compact ranch-style houses to an apartment house to a number of four-unit units per, per building. A lot of variety. It's, when you drive by, you'd be hard-pressed to think that it's been there almost 50 years. And it took a number of years to build, just as the Old Hill did, starting in the 1920s. And, and going, you know, just doing, kind of working more naturally that way. And I, where Presley's is, is a condominium or an envelope condominium. And then where I have in a fourplex, for lack of a better term, and it's, it's really well-designed. It's, it'd really fool you. I have three bedrooms. There could be a fourth in the basement with a negress window, two full baths, two half-baths. I don't know what, who they thought would be moving in. And very roomy and what have you, until this recent inflation in, in that cul-de-sac. It's a combination of, of two single-story units on the ends and two-story in the middle. And they were selling for anywhere from 110 to 135,000. And, and, you know, it's a nice place to live. And I don't, you know, I, I don't presume to, to know how this could be done, but, but the sense I get is that it takes a different approach if you have, say, five or six developments. But in a lot of ways, when things aren't so large, they're easier. You can break it down into units and easier to, easier to handle. And also offer some real variety, which that's what troubles me about the developments in the last 20 years in Salina. Couldn't they at, at least use different colors of paint if they're all going to be identical? And, and, but no. And, and of course, we're limited. All these units have just a single-car garage. There's, there's no question in my mind, if they had two and three-car garages, they'd be over 200,000. Because there's nothing for less than that anywhere in town that has that quality.
Get you to try to wrap up.
Yeah, I, I, this is, is, is interesting to me, but I really think that, and in taking time to do it and you're up against a deadline. But I think it's going to be easier to meet a deadline if you have smaller units spread than trying to, to, I mean, look at the difference between building, new buildings in downtown versus a hotel, which is, and it's not that they didn't know what they were doing, it just was a much bigger project and it took a long time. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, that, this is.
Point, point to be interesting.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So as a recap, certainly understand the point about size, and we'll take a, take a look at that language, take a look at that number, and then take a look at, at trying to soften that language a little bit to keep our options open. You know, responding to $25 million available from the state is, is a unique opportunity for us. And I think it creates, hopefully, it creates unique interest on the part of the development community as well. So this is an odd timeline. It is a kind of a unique scenario that we started down a path of trying to convince private development to do, essentially go it on their own with what incentives we might have. This, this is, is a different twist that we're trying to manage to the best we can.
All right. Thank you. Any other business?
Yeah, Saturday, I took a drive through Bill Burke Park to check the progress there on the Baldimens. And they're making a lot of progress, but there's a lot to do. And there are a lot of equipment down there. I was happy to see that they're not just pulling out, going to do another job, they're sticking with it. So I hope that's on track.
In that regard, they made a strategic decision to do three fields, a, a set of three, then followed by another set of three, then by two, rather than tear into all of them. So start and finish through, or at least make enough progress on those before they start into next, just to kind of take into account the weather, unpredictability of the weather in the off-season and knowing that we need to have facilities available in the spring.
And they started, started in the middle of the complex, so you really don't see what's going on just driving by on Crawford. You've got to drive in there. There's, I don't know how many hundreds of tons of gravel there is in there to start prepping the fields, but it's moving along.
Mayor, I have an announcement that'll, I think, lead to some discussion amongst the commissioners. I think for probably the entire time that we've had the city commission form of government, the vice mayor's been afforded the opportunity to become mayor in the succeeding year that I've made the decision not to seek or to accept the nomination as mayor in 2023. So I thought it important that I put this decision out in front of all of you as my fellow commissioners so we can preserve the celebration and the dignity that goes with the changing of the, of the guard. I'd like to thank the staff, especially Scott Gardner and Dave Hawkins back there for all that they've tried to do in the room here to help my hearing, but I have a declining hearing problem and it's, it's going to get worse. And I just, with four very competent people here at the diocese, two ex-mayors and two people that are, be in line to be mayor, there's no reason for me to risk offending anyone or mishearing things because, so I just want to preserve the integrity of the, the commission and, and the conduct of the meetings. So I put that out there for discussion and maybe everybody needs a week to think about it. So I wanted to afford the opportunity to, for everybody to wrap their head around it.
Do you have, we have not historically, we've not had a reason to discuss future elections ahead of time.
Well, a couple, a couple thoughts I'd add. We, we have a practice, but we don't have a policy in terms of that ascension. Ultimately, the selection of the mayor and, and the vice mayor is, is the governing bodies. We typically do that at the organizational meeting, which, the way our schedule falls this year, today's the 12th, we'll meet on the 19th. We won't meet on the 26th. We won't meet on the 2nd. And so the 9th of January, and you'll have a meeting next week. And then the next meeting will be the 9th of January, which will be the organizational meeting. So, you know, in the normal course of things, that vote is taken, it would be taken on the 9th. You know, in the past, it's been unwritten or it's just been past practice, but not required.
Just my opinion is it's a very valuable practice because it also, it awards the people that voted for the individuals up here the opportunity to be a mayor and do it in an order that recognizes their success in the election and it recognizes the individual for the hard work they did in the campaign thing. I think a piece that's overlooked is that it is probably potentially, depending on what group of commissioners we have up here, and I think this is a very congenial and, and respectful group, but eliminates a source of conflict. So my personal opinion, I would say we look to one of the former mayors that we have sitting up here, Mr. Hoppick or Reverend Davis, Mayor Davis, and keep the, the line in order. There will certainly be an election this next year. There'll be different personalities up here. And if we get out of order, we don't know what the consequences of that may be for our good rapport. That's just my opinion.
So do we need to look at a special meeting between now and the 9th to figure this out?
Well, I can tell you, it's not uncommon for, for cities to have the format that we have in that the, the mayor is selected from amongst the governing body. I don't know that they have a pre-meeting to do that. It's a motion second and a vote when the time comes. I, you know, we have to be mindful of open meetings in terms of conversations and I'd encourage you to bear that in mind as well. But if you had, if you have questions, if you have information you want staff to pull together and report back, the only thing I can think of is that succession, how it currently looks and what it would look like if, if there's a gap there. This is the only information I know from a staff perspective. The rest of it's really discretionary on your part as the governing body.
And, you know, we can discuss it next week, but we don't actually have a, an election, so to speak, until the 9th. But, but caution you, each one of us only talked to one person, one other person about this, as far as not having an open meetings violation. So if we want to have a roundtable, round robin of discussion, we'd have to do it. I'm going to suggest if we're going to do it, do it next week's meeting because we're not done tonight yet. But just so that we don't have a series of serial meetings.
Kind of rings the bell of what I've heard from people about having an elected mayor. And, you know, I know that's not our system or form, but it's something to talk about.
Would now be an inappropriate time to share a thought on this, or do we need to?
Not at all. Go for it.
I'd just like to throw out there that Commissioner Hoppick kind of drew the short straw in 2020 with the pandemic. And, you know, a big part of, you know, obviously procedural part of it, you were able to participate in, but a lot of the, you know, the pomp and circumstances, the appearances, et cetera. You know, this is an outsider looking in, not being in office at the time. I think you're short-changed, for what it's worth.
With COVID, we weren't short-changed.
With COVID, we weren't short-changed. Some things, but I understand what you're saying. Yeah, we had a, yeah, so.
I think you kind of drew the short straw.
He may have worked the hardest and got the least recognition for it.
Certainly one of the more unique years in the 100-year history of our form up here. And I thought Mr. Hoppick did a terrific job as mayor, both preserving the city's finances and then handling all of the public referendums and hearings that we had. So that was a tough year. Did a good job.
All right.
I guess if you, if you would like this to be a discussion item on next week's agenda, that would be helpful to know. We can certainly put it on there if you would like.
And we would always have the option to go into discussion during other business?
Yeah.
Or would it, yeah, let me seek counsel first. Would it be better to have it as an agenda?
Well, we're in that situation where you all are able, on a majority vote, to set your agenda in anticipation of future meetings. Technically, to consider a matter in the same meeting does require that extraordinary majority of two-thirds, or what translates to four votes. So I think you can handle it however you wish, obviously, but there is that distinction between a motion to consider a matter in a current meeting as opposed to a future meeting.
And even if all we have is discussion, if there is no discussion, it's a very short-lipped agenda item. It would be better just to have it as a discussion because we would not be taking a vote on the position, I would assume, not until January 9th.
Yeah, our advice would be that the organizational meeting on the 9th would be the time to take the vote, but between discussion on your part as well as feedback from citizens, if you, if you anticipate that it's going to be a discussion item, it's probably advisable to put it on the agenda.
Well, I'll look up and down. Do we need more discussion next week? Do you want more discussion?
I would like the discussion maybe between the five members of the city commission up here. I think it's a decision we have to make, knowing each other's abilities and, and personalities. And sometimes we get people at the podium that have their own agendas. So I think it should more closely align with our conversation up here.
Is that to say wait until January 9th? Just, am I interpreting that correctly or incorrectly?
No, I thought that probably you, we'd want to make that decision now or in the next meeting so that you can give appropriate recognition to the people that are going out of office, coming into office. I mean, typically incoming mayor, vice mayor would have family members here, there'd be remarks made. And so I, it's just me talking again, but I would think that you'd want to preserve that type of decorum and, and the opportunity to celebrate the installation.
And that is something I had not thought of. Let's, so I don't make a motion, is there someone who would move to add this as a discussion item to next week's agenda?
I'll make the motion to make this a discussion item next week.
Right, moved in second to discuss the, our reorganization for 2023 at next week's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, five, nothing. Thank you.
Mayor, if there's no other business, could I give you an update?
Couldn't tell where the voice is coming from.
Could I, I just wanted to give you an update in regards to your question about the URL for the forum, which is going to be held Wednesday. That actually is a correct URL. I know it looks very odd with the dot in the middle. I would encourage people to visit the City of Salina website and they can just click on that link within the agenda forum. They can manually type in that URL. I would urge them to remember not to put a dot at the end and to make sure that they include the S. That is going to be HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash Y O U two T U dot B E forward slash nine R, nine capital K dash capital A K nine G eighty. We have very limited ability to decide our own URLs for those live streams, so obviously that's not the one we'd pick, but that is a valid URL. So I wanted to give you that update and so others would get that too.
Thank you very much.
Can you repeat that slowly? Seriously.
I'll, I'll come back.
It's on, we've got a printout of it on the agenda that we can give you. No, on the agenda for that particular meeting. It's distributed separately.
All right. There's a, I'm sorry, before we do that, let's go to citizens forum. It's an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium to address an item of your preference. Ask that, we do watch this three, three-minute clock here.
Norah Mantle Salina, I think I forgot to put my name last one time. Here's an issue you ought to be discussing in light of the substation issue in North Carolina. What is the city doing to protect our substations? You better get something because we're going to bring them drones in, they are. And this isn't the first time this has happened in the United States. They had a substation shot up in San Jose, California, three years ago. RE8 doesn't want to talk about it. I've asked him, what do you want to do to protect these? He said, we can't. I've built substations. You cannot restrict that airflow around them because it'll heat up and shut down. I don't know what you're going to do if you try to put a roof on it. They put fans on them now in the summertime to keep them from overheating. So that's something you better be looking at because if you ain't got no electricity, this will all go out. My second request, where's the location of this water, that lake that was put in the presentation at the study session?
I'm sorry, which, which water?
Where is that lake, that body of water?
It was Lakewood Park.
That ain't big enough to attack.
It looked impressive on the video.
Yeah. I'd, I'd like to look for that lake because I got a boat I'd put on it.
Well, it's like hotel rooms and travel brochures. It looks like a suite and you come in there, it's an eight-by-ten room and you wonder, how'd they do this?
If I was to come here and I said, where's this lake at? I want to, I want to use it. That's misleading. Smells like snake oil to me or a rat.
Well, the Golden Dome at Notre Dame isn't as big as it looks in the pictures either. But people go see it, yeah.
Well, I'm looking for it. Because I got a boat I want to put on it.
Hope I didn't offend any fighting Irish fans out here.
Well, just in case you did, the dome might be small, but Touchdown Jesus is huge.
That's, that's as advertised.
And before I get started, congratulations on a great KU football season. Wasn't as good as K-State's. Rock and chalk. Anyway, had a couple of things and I'll add one quick one at the end. On the forum, the homeless forum, I understand that you're having a moderator and that moderator is going to be Ann Zimmerman. Can you tell us how that, how the school board person was chosen to run a city commission meeting instead of the mayor running the city commission meeting? And are, if they have a special man at the school board, are you going to run that meeting?
She actually does this service in independent?
Well, I asked that because we had a fluoride forum when I was on the commission. We had her do it and it wasn't her fault, but it turned into a bleep show. And we said, let's don't do it that way again. Let's have the mayor represent, who represents the people, represent the town hall. That's my saying on that. I'm more disappointed that when I originally came here and said that we had 18 officers short on patrol and asked for a public conversation, that was told that that was going to come and somehow it got switched to a homeless forum. There's a problem in both areas, so at least we're addressing one of them. I hope that we'll get back to the police department shortage because now, a couple things. Also, I was here a few weeks ago and I asked about if this commission supported fully funding the drug task force and was basically told we don't want to talk about those, those things in open meetings. Well, I'll tell you, on Friday afternoon in, in this open meeting at the police review board, the question was asked, do we have a drug task force? And the answer was no. Question was also, I don't know if the question was asked, but information was given about the numbers of officer we have available for patrol. And at 84 budgeted uniformed officers, we have 69. Out of those 69, 10 are in training, which means we have 59 available to be on patrol. Out of that 59 we have available farm on parole, we have no idea, staff does, how many of those are on any sort of leave, military leave, administrative leave, any other type of leave that aren't available for patrol. I do know that I heard through sources that last week, one time we had four people out on patrol in the whole city. I said it before, I think we're stressing out our officers. I think we need to get this problem solved because it's not fair to our officers who are going to get burned out on this thing and I support them 100%. Last thing, I, I too suffer from a lifelong hearing loss. I have an artificial eardrum. I got it when I was 10 years old. It's very frustrating. So I know how you feel and, and I, my heart goes to you on that. It really is a difficult thing to deal with and I appreciate you bringing that up. I also, just real quick, from a standpoint of institutional experience here, we did have this issue that came up a few years ago. I was the mayor at the time and Kate Crawford was the vice mayor. You were the next in line, Commissioner Ryan. At that time, we were given a night, we were given nine extra months because of legislation that changed elections from the spring to the fall. And so our terms went from April to January. It was an extra nine months. At that time, I had offered a suggestion that why don't we put Commissioner Hardy, who was in the third spot in the election, in the mayor's chair for the nine months? I'd move down and the two of you would move over or move around. Kate Crawford would then become vice mayor for nine months and then it'd go. I'd, I'd, I'd like you to revisit what your comments were during that, during that discussion because what ended up happening is that I left the mayor's chair. The vice mayor Crawford came, became mayor and she was mayor for a year and nine months. Now bear in mind, I won the most votes. I was first place. I'd make a deal about it. I voted in favor of it. I said, let's do that. So my suggestion would be that Mayor Davis, either you serve another year or six months or Commissioner Longbine serve early and then have Commissioner Langwitz come down and be vice mayor and just move the chairs around because I just hope that we're consistent with our decisions. And, and I will say this too. It's not because I don't think Commissioner Hoppick did a good job as mayor. In fact, I sent you an email that said, I thought you did a really good job and I appreciated it. So it doesn't have anything to do with that. It just has to be with, let's be consistent with how we do things because the voters are the ones that chose.
Something that occurs rarely doesn't necessarily have a consistent precedent. And different, different times, I mean, it's going to be a decision we'll make, but different times derive different solutions.
I would just say that it's very similar with the difference of three months. And I would just say revisit what your precedent was at the time.
Well, we don't have a precedent on this.
Well, you do. Go back and look at 2015, 16 because there was. And actually, it might be helpful, it might be helpful. There was a process too that was, that was.
There, there are only five people. There are only five people who are going to make this decision.
That's correct. And you were, and you were there at the time, so I would think that you might have a little bit of institutional knowledge as well.
And I do, and we made that decision for a different reason than what you're implying.
Uh, no, we did not. But I'll come back and be part of the discussion. You can enlighten me how, how it's different. Thank you. Because part of the thing was, is that the, the city manager offered suggestions throughout the process of that. So I'm not putting you on the spot, but, but I don't think that that's, and just to say, I don't think that it ought to be in, in the city manager's hand. I think it ought to be in yours.
And it is in our hand, not the city manager's hand. Anyone else? All right. There is a, will be a request for an executive session. I'm going to suggest that we do the first 25 minutes, knowing that we may need to come back and get perhaps an additional 35 minutes or we may be done for today in 20 or 25 minutes. But rather than obligate ourselves to sit in the room longer than we need to, I'd rather go short the first time and come back for more time if we need it.
Do you want to need a break?
We will put a five-minute break before, before the executive session starts, yeah.
Mayor, I move we take a five-minute break and then recess into executive session for 25 minutes to discuss the city manager's evaluation based upon the need to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75 dash 4319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:10.
Second?
7:15.
Okay, it's been moved in second to move in, to request into executive session to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel. Will be there for 25 minutes, starting after a five-minute break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll be in recess for five minutes and then executive session.
We're back in regular session. We don't have specific action to take today other than to request that next week's agenda include a similar executive session for, I'd say 30 minutes for the same purpose.
Okay.
And other than that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move and adjourn.
Move and adjourn all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.